Zoom, you're gonna record to the cloud.
Play record, right?
And that should give you an option, record to this computer or record to the cloud, do it to the cloud. Thank you.
I'm genius.
Are you done for the day?
I'm done.
You brought coffee and you.
Put my Bailey's in my coffee.
Are we ready to get started?
Yep.
All right, well, good morning, everyone. Um, I'm Michelle and with me is my colleague Maddie. And as Greg said earlier, combined for Julia. So yeah, uh, maybe in height, like we need both of us to be, to be Julia's height and stature. Um, but it's a, it's a pleasure to be with all of you today. Um, as we get started in our conversation today, you have um, a number of things in front of you. We're gonna go through them throughout the, throughout the day. Um, but I wanna just ground us a little bit in the agenda for today's conversation. And then certainly, um, as the chair, if you'd like to make some opening comments. Um, our intent, you've got a copy of the agenda there um, in front of you, but we also have it up here um, on the wall too. We're gonna um, start, we'll, we'll go around and I'll ask you to share your expectations for the time together today. And then we're gonna um, spend some time this morning, really talking about um, the current context. What's happening on the island today that may be different from when the strategic plan was first envisioned and then ultimately adopted in twenty eighteen. Um, as we came in, Maddie and I came in yesterday, I was remembering the last time I was on island was right before the pandemic. So it was um, late twenty nineteen and um, a lot has changed since then. A lot is the same and a lot has changed. And so as you think about the next five years for uh, the priorities of your strategic plan, it's important to think about um, what's changed since the time that this strategic plan originally was adopted. I know you all have um, very diligently reviewed it every year, but this is a real opportunity to take a bit of a step back and think about um, a lot of the changes that have occurred and how that impacts priorities for uh, for the town going forward. So we're gonna talk about uh, the current context in light of the strategic plan. And we'll share a little bit about um, successes and progress for the existing strategic plan, but really focusing in on what the, what the priorities should be, which really sets us up to um, to have some really focused conversation about the priorities, given your current context. There's a lot going on on the island. Um, sometimes I'm sure for each of you, it feels like too much, more than, more than you all have capacity to take on. And so how does this body really help focus on what are the most important things to accomplish over the next five years so that there's clarity um, in the community as well as for uh, for town staff? And then we'll also talk a little bit about communication, cuz in some of my conversations with some of you leading up to today, we talked about the need to ensure that there is um, clear communication about those priorities out to the community, so that um, so there is clarity among this body and then in how you communicate those messages back out to the community so that um, they understand where the resources are being uh, focused. And importantly, where they're not being focused as well too. Can't be everything to all people as much as we really, really try. So how do we really ensure the focus? And so we'll, we'll end today uh, with talking about what those next steps might look like. Um, as always, please be relaxed, this is your time. Uh, lunch will magically appear at some point around the lunchtime, um, and we will always um, take breaks. Greg baked some wonderful um, donuts and muffins and scones this morning and he'd be really offended if they don't get any. So um, by all means, get up, grab what you need whenever you need it. Um, we also have norms up here. Um, these should probably be pretty, pretty familiar to you all. I know they're often the ones that uh, that Julie and I have always, always used with some, some minor tweaks here and there. Um, but obviously we want you to um, listen to each other with respect, one person speaking at a time so that you all can hear each other and really learn each other's perspective as we go about uh, today's conversation. Um, uh, we always talk about being bold. I don't think that's an issue here. I actually think the bigger issue is about being positive and realistic about um, uh, there's so many opportunities here on the island. But what's, what, what can this organization realistically accomplish for the community? And so uh, we may focus a little more in this area on, on being realistic. And, and some of that is gonna be about being candid and honest about um, what you can do and what you can't do and what some of those trade-offs are. Those are hard conversations to have uh, because we, we want to be a place that says yes all the time. Um, that's gonna require some patience as well too, because not everything, as we talked about, certainly all of the needs and wants out there, not all of them can be met. Um, and I know you all a- always do this, but we want you to continue to strive for consensus too as we have this, have this conversation. And we hope to have a little bit of fun in these conversations, as hard as they may be, um, but really focusing in on those things that you all believe are most important to help advance the community in the direction that you've all laid out in your strategic plan. So that's a little bit of just kinda setting the stage and I'll turn it over to the chair. If you've got any opening comments, did you want to?
Meeting officially to order?
I was here for the beginning of the strategic plan, as Matt was. Um, and it's just, it's evolved over the years and I'm always, you know, looking for how do we reprioritize what other things have come at us and I mean, I think that, I think we all sort of know how this goes, but um, I, I think it's important for us to be realistic and work with administration what we can account, what we actually can do. Um, and um, and I'm, I'm definitely looking for how should we reprioritize in any of the categories and the action steps and so forth.
So let's go around and I'm gonna invite you to each kinda share your expectations. Now knowing what the focus of our conversation is today, um, just um, hopes and expectations that you have for today's conversation. Anything else that you would add? Right. Matt, how about you?
Oh, boy.
No, I think, I, I think you hit it on the nail on the head when you said we need to take a step back. I think we need to take the step back and look at what's realistic. I think we're restrained by the lack of manpower, lack of horsepower that we have. And I think we're getting pulled in too many directions and people want us to spend a lot of money, but they don't wanna vote for it. I think almost the biggest priority is the, I'm getting into details now, is the town building. I think we need all the town employees in one place so that we put the town, so that the town is, is connected. I feel like sometimes we're not connected. And so some things we do really great, great on, you know, PFAS, we've done amazing. Certain things we've taken them on and the right person owns it, it's amazing. Other things like the short-term model, it's five or six years, and we don't, we're just pulling some information together now. And so I think it would be better if everyone was in one building and I think that would help solve some of the things that we can't seem to get to. So I, so I, even though we've keep pushing that down the, you know, down the road to like, oh, they won't vote for it, we'll do it later. I think the fact that we're doing that has made it impossible to get some other things accomplished. And then I think that we need to work, we'll start working on uh, you know, sort of the, some of the issues that people say, like maintenance and repair, you know, we, we're, you know, crews outside doing it now, I just drove through. And that's a huge improvement, but we need to do that. And then enforcement of all types, you know, for safety and other reasons, we need to focus on that. And then I think that there's uh, you know, and then what are the biggest complaints people have? And it's traffic, traffic, traffic. How are we gonna deal with that? Like, so there's certain things, I think that people, if we show progress in those things, without even spending a lot of money, then I think that the, you know, or maybe making money, then I think that we'll get the buy-in for other things. So there's my opening. Thank you.
So I, I guess what I would say is, like, I agree with many things that Matt said. I think those are, those are good points and I'm sure we all similar things to say. I, I, I think when we had this initial conversation, um, and something that I was thinking about is that like with traffic and a couple of the other kinda perennial issues that we have, there's a lot that gets floated out there about like what we can and can't do. And I think that we sometimes maybe need to focus a little bit on what's real, kind of to your theme, kinda what's realistic and what's possible. Because if, if Old South Road is not gonna be opened up to Richmond and et cetera, et cetera, if that's off the table, um, then I think we kinda need to tell the public that that's not gonna happen and kinda hear, like, if, if you wanna make Old South Road better, here, here are the options. Um, be- because I think we get um, we get unfairly um, kinda tasked with that, that we're not doing anything. And um, a lot of it is just really difficult political choices or the trade-offs aren't worth it. Um, so I, I think, I think I'd like to, for us to focus on um, kinda the, the, the theme, which is kind of what is realistic and to sometimes make that a little bit more clear to um, to, to what, what the trade-offs may be for some of this.
Malcolm, expectation?
Well, I think uh, my colleagues have said most of it. I mean, I have a sense, one of the frustrating things I find in this job is that uh, is we really don't sometimes have the power that I wish we had. We really talk a lot and I'm not sure we do much. Uh, I have a sense the island's sort of out of control. I think it's all been, I think traffic is, is just part of it, but it's like the out of control traffic, the island's totally out of control. And I, I just wanna kinda bring it back a little bit, but I don't wanna be the old curmudgeon that bring it back to where it was, you know, fifty years ago. Uh, there's someplace in between. We're, we're, it's just out of control. So my expectations is I, I hope we can find some way to, to kind of reel everything in.
Greg, Libby, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, um, the part about communications to me is really important because um, good communications manage expectations. And I think it speaks to what everybody said about what can and can't be done. And by the way, what has been tried and the voters have said no, right? I th- I find the most frustrating thing is we present what is the, what we think the best solution for an, an identified complaint or problem. And we go to town meeting and the, and the voters say, no, thank you. And so um, that's extremely frustrating. And I think, you know, to Malcolm's point, we are not the legislature, we don't have that authority. And so I think there's a lack of understanding about the intersection between the select board on the administrative side, really, and the, and the legislative body at town meeting. I think uh, somebody at some, I think you said it, what we can't do, right? Like, I think we need to cl- clearly say where we have chosen not to do something, either because there are other priorities or because it's politically, we've tried it and it's politically hasn't gotten the votes. I mean, our island home probably falls into that example. Millions of dollars have been spent planning for something that the voters keep rejecting. At what point do we say we're done, right? Um, and um, and I think, you know, we do a lot of talk about problems. The island's out of control, traffic's out of control. Um, I, I wanna, I wanna do more solution oriented talk um, rather than recycling problem-oriented talk. I don't know how we get there, especially given that the voters keep telling us no when we present solutions. It's, it's a little frustrating. But I do think um, in an environment where people have high expectations for information, but they don't invest a lot of time to get the information and they complain they don't know anything. Um, that is a, that has been a growing dilemma um, that I think we're doing a lot about and we could, you know, we can talk more about it. And I think there's been a great deal more collaboration, cross-collaboration, interdepartmental, inter-board collaboration than I've observed in my time in public life. That is growing and I think it needs to continue to grow. It's a lot of work, but it yields uh, results that are generally agreed upon, so you don't run into a barrier at a board because they didn't know that was the select board's priority, right? So that's where I'm at.
Libby, back to you.
So I'm drawing down a whole lot of notes here. Um, my, from, from my point of view as the manager, we need clarity from the board on projects, initiatives, programs. There's a lot of times when one board member will say, we need to do X, Y, Z at a meeting or outside of the meeting. And then there's kind of a lingering, well, what happened with that thing I wanted to have, to have, happens? And, and it comes back, but there hasn't been a vote of the board to do that thing. So we need, we need some clarity on making sure that if there's something a board member wants, get the rest of them on board to do it. Um, we need select board support on projects. We have, you'll see momentarily, we have a lot of projects out there and we've already seen the voters are, are concerned, rightly so. There's a lot of money out there. And we need to, we need to be realistic and, and set expectations about these projects, like, like everybody has said here. But the board's support on whatever project we land on, everybody needs to be well-versed in it. You need to talk about it in the community. You need to speak on it at town meeting and support it e- everywhere. And if you don't, then we gotta rethink it. Or revisit the project or re-figure it or something, because that's when things just start to fail. Um, we have a lot going on in town admin. We'll get to the what's changed since the first strategic plan. And I can't wait to um, go into those some things, cuz there, there's a significant amount of them. Um, and I, I, um, communications, I totally agree with Brooke. We, Brooke, we are, we are really struggling to get out to the public i- information. We have lots of public comments about things that are based entirely on opinions. They're not based on facts and we're, we're developing a response to that so we can get the facts out. It's very time-consuming. Um, it's very important. And we're probably one of the towns, of towns our size, one of the only ones that has an actual communications division that is as skilled as they are. It's, it's hard to find those people. Um, it, the, the socializing of this, the board's priorities, um, w- w- we need to get, get it that a little better. Dawn came back from an MMA meeting several years ago with the idea that a, a, a couple of other towns had done of having a regular meeting with the big five, like the planning board thing comes, select board, a couple of others. And w- that needs to be carefully structured. You, you kind of need a facilitator for something like that unless somebody's just very good at that. And it takes a lot to organize something like that, especially if it's gonna be more than just the chair and vice-chair at, at something like that. You need to find a big meeting space. It is, it is nightmarish to try to find a date. Um, so, so just, but we, we do need to get at that. Um, and it's kind of feel sort of like it's hard choice time. We, with these projects that we're gonna be looking at, um, we cannot do all of them. And there are some, the rise to the top is being very important. But I, I sort of feel like in our discussions, we've said Nantucket cannot provide everything that the mainland has. It's just not possible unless we wanna pay for it and run it and operate it and maintain it um, and fund it. So there's, there's, there's a lot happening, but I'm excited about going through.
And, and what I hear and what you say is there's trade-offs. There's trade-offs for the things that you, that this community chooses to have here. There's trade-offs that um, that make this a unique place. It's why, why it's desirable. So, okay. Um, Greg and then Rick in terms of expectations for today.
Oh, sure. Uh, well, everybody has said most everything, but um, you know, we were there from the beginning and I think the uh, the plan was created with different, in a different environment, a different time, with different um, expectations for the future and things like Matt has said, it's really changed. So I look forward to like doing a bit of a reset, looking at what the plan is, is it what the board is looking for? I like to keep going back. I mentioned this yesterday, that our uh, mantra was, how do you vision Nantucket in fifty years? And it was no traffic lights. And that was kind of our theme that we built around. And if that's still the same, the world around us has changed quite a bit. So I think the plan needs to change to accommodate that. Um, there are definitely trade-offs. And, and I, I think we had more capacity when the plan was being built. Like, cuz we started this in two thousand fifteen, there was, you know, really got the board, you got to two thousand sixteen, adopted two thousand eighteen, like, it was different. And I think there was this different uh, capacity.
The world was different.
The world was different and the structure of the town and even the way businesses ran on the island and just the, maybe even the people coming over were just a little different. So I think it's time to look back and, you know, set those expectations to, to town staff about what we can do and maybe within the board. And maybe we can retool this a little bit to really help us with the critical issues. I think we're all willing to do that.
Well, it's great to go last. And so I wasn't here at, for when we originally said this. Um, but I suspect that there's new issues like PFAS, DEI, civility, more regulation. There's probably some new trends, like the cost of execution, project complexity, those projects interlovenness, either from a financial perspective or from an execution perspective. And then, I don't know, it seems like there's more unknowns these days, probably relative to ten years ago, things like whales, vineyard wind, indoor record, indoor recreation, certain property acquisitions. Um, and I've been sort of thinking about coming here the last couple of weeks, um, a couple of things that I wanted to just mention. Like, when I think about a word cloud and the biggest word in the cloud for me for the last several weeks has been enforcement. And it feels to me like we need to figure, you guys need to figure out where, what your posture is relative to enforcement. Article two, I, I've just jotted them down over the last couple of weeks, article two, obviously. Pass due licenses for moorings, deed restrictions, vineyard wind, enforce, these are all enforcing zoning, illegal dumping, tourro, overcrowding, e-bikes, street stuff, if we wanna keep, you know, trying to drain the place in, encroachments and parking, just to, to name the ones that I jotted down.
Is that your word cloud?
That's no. Um, and then I guess just on big projects, there's a point was be made, I think we need to, we need to realize just how expensive they are, but more importantly, how complex they are and how much time they take from, for staff. And it would be super helpful if, I don't know, if we came out a year and we said, there are a maximum of five projects that, that we think we can do as a town. Now the, you know, some projects are bigger than others. And we're not gonna talk about the other ones. We're not gonna focus on the other ones. We're not gonna worry about the other ones um, until we, until we get through these five or we change our set of priorities. And then I think the, the last piece I put on that is, I think for big projects, you, the select board should be nearly unanimous in their support for a project. Otherwise, I, I mean, I don't know, if it's only important for three of the five of you, then I don't know how that means it's really a top project or, or the island.
It, it challenges some of the messaging in the community. And, and one of the things that I've heard several of you talk about is for a town this size, communication seems to be um, an exacerbated challenge. It's, it's sort of outweighs the size. It has a huge shadow, as Libby said, that there's a lot of misinformation out there. And that's not unique to Nantucket. It's certainly what we see across the country. But um, there's something different here about making sure that there's clarity among. And I think that has to do some with the town meeting and all of that. So being clear about what those priorities are and having, having support um, out in the community may be contingent upon having full support of the select board. That's something for you all to, to talk a little bit about. So those are um, expectations. I'll put that up. And one of the things I hear, I hear in all of these things that you've said is certainly that um, the need to set priorities, be realistic and also focus. This idea of how to help focus, because there are so many things to do. Um, if you're only doing a little bit of all of those things, you're getting nothing accomplished. You're only incrementally, very, very incrementally moving the needle. And because of what's been going on, on the island, um, I almost think that those incremental steps actually are pushing you backwards. And so how do we narrow that focus so that you can see and the community can see true progress over some of those major priorities? So before we talk about the specifics, um, what I wanna invite you to do um, for the next few minutes and think about this um, silently for a second and then, and then we'll, then we'll talk more about it. Before we talk about the strategic plan and the specific projects and initiatives, I want you to um, put your, put your twenty eighteen hat on. And think about, um, kinda put yourself in twenty eighteen, if you can remember what you were doing back in twenty eighteen. And think about then the town today versus twenty eighteen. Silently for a minute, think about what was different. What has changed since either in the community, perhaps even in your own life and what you're doing for your town life as well as your non-town life, if that's even possible? Um, what's different? What's changed between twenty eighteen and today? Take a minute to think about it and then I'll, I'll ask you to share. I'd like to start. Maddie's gonna catch her something.
Since twenty eighteen, we had COVID.
Yep.
And it set us back significantly as a community. Um, but it also attracted a lot more people to Nantucket for safety.
So talk a little bit about how it set, set the town back.
Everything was pretty much dropped to respond to COVID.
Yeah.
Um, there were so many meetings. And um, so that's just, just one, one part.
And then you said, as a result, it brought people here.
And it brought a lot more people here. It brought a lot more wealth here. There was always been community wealth, but there is a big com- competition of more people competing for real estate here, the town trying to acquire real estate to house essential workers. Um, us trying to meet our sh- shy goals to stop unfriendly forty Bs that cause massive lawsuits. Um, there's, I mean, it's there's uh, you know, housing continues. There's so much competition for housing on the island, which then causes traffic. And there's the competition between voters who are, have long-term family you know, can, have worked in construction and they think everything can be done cheaper. Then, so there, yeah, um. And just the, the, the very common theme is transportation. And we tried to promote things like e-bikes and bike paths. And it's, it's definitely a little out of hand that e-bikes came and they're really fast and they're a little scary. And um, and the environmental issues that we're facing are far greater and far more expensive. And there's just far more competition to be on the beaches and on the parks than there was in twenty eighteen. Just far more competition to be on the beaches and on the parks than there was in twenty eighteen. And we have significant town needs, our offices are falling apart. And um, we can't even get the voters to approve. Designs for that. So it's. It's a struggle and I want to be positive.
No, it's okay, no, this is the realistic part of it and and what I hear in that too is. Covid had, um, again, an outsized impact on the island. Things shut down. That was the priority focus and then the, in a lot of communities, but something very different here. On the island shifted, sounds like after covid in terms of how it's impacted operations today.
It feels to me is that that was a big turning.
How about others of you, do you feel that?
I agree, I I was gonna say. Like I said at the beginning, it's 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 a surge of people that. And it it did come from covid, I mean, I know so many people. Who had a summer house here whose kids moved in for covid, left the left the big cities and a lot of them just stayed. It's just more people and more people means we have to spend more money, we have more environmental. Problems, this island was not designed for the population that we're presently living with. That's why I said we're out of control, we're out of control because we have a small island and too many people.
Other other things you all thought about, things that are different.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that that the the explosion. We would have seen a development trend over time, what happened is it really spiked and because of covid, right, so we saw. A sudden, what felt like a really sudden escalation, you know, the frog in the hot water or, you know. Uh, I think that added to it, I think that I think the cost, the impact on the cost of everything. Um, the acceleration of, you know, the numbers attached to projects have gone through the roof, it's sticker shop is real. Um, it's and and it comes with an expectation that it could be done for. The old numbers, but it can't and there's a gap there, I talk a lot about expectation, right? Um, who comes to dawn point? Who the who are the people who are finding Nantucket now, it's a different type of person. Uh, certainly from when I came here in nineteen eighty-five and certainly even since two thousand eighteen, right? Um, this place is attractive to a different cohort of people who have. Greater expectations from their home communities and I find in talking to some of those people like a friend of some. Church who bought a home, she's from Texas, she reached out on an issue and I'm like. You need to understand that's how it's different, we're not Dallas. We're in Antucket and so I think sometimes they bring that, I lived in Vermont for ten years and everyone, everyone. Moved to Vermont for the bucolic life and then needed a Starbucks around the corner, right? Um, and that that, you know. Changed, cha- that has changed everywhere and some first changes are systemic and nationwide. And sometimes people who've been on Antucket a long time don't realize this isn't just happening here, it's happening everywhere. Um, I feel like we've had more crises. That have absorbed a ton of time. The wind farm situation, PFAS, there's there are topics that it's like a bonfire overnight. And it takes, it sucks the oxygen out of the room for other things that have been on. You know, in the planning stages, um, on a more positive note, well, we have more issues with cybersecurity, just something a lot of. A lot of, that's hugely different, but I would say there's substantially more support for housing. Efforts than there was in two thousand eighteen, substantially more, now, we're seeing cracks in that. In twenty twenty-five, but the sea change on that topic from Surfside Crossing. And neighborhood first funding and the voters funding, you know, now a hundred million dollars of of money for housing efforts. I've, that is a, that is an overnight change over, you know, seven years. So, um, that's a really positive thing and how we maintain support for that is something I really want to talk about.
Why do you think that's different? Why do you think that that has shifted?
Well, because there was an imminent threat. And and this community responds. Voters respond to the thing that's here. I don't think humans are really good about long-term planning, so as much long-term planning and we as we do, people don't. I was thinking as we were talking to Harbor Master Building, like, we've been trying to get that done for years and. It's almost like we have to wait until something's about to fall down before people realize we have to fix it. Um, or that a road system is so bad that we need and and the longer we wait, the more. And the other thing we do is we vote down things today so we can pay double for them tomorrow, it's just a habit in this community. That makes me nuts and I don't know how to get that bad.
Yeah, the cycle you want to break.
Totally, yeah, and maybe it is about selecting projects and doing more communications on a smaller number of projects, so people know what's coming. Think about the mice guys, the genetic mice people, people like, when is that happening, I'm like, years from now, but they're getting way ahead of the curve. On communication so that when the. Yeah, they're gonna, anyway. It's a tick toil illness, but the point is they're years away from. Ever instituting a new. Thing, but they that they've taken a strategy of a ten-year communication strategy. On what is going to be controversial, right, so anyway.
So it's almost like it becomes becomes part of part of part of the norm as opposed to being.
It's not a surprise.
Yeah.
When it happened, when it when the decision time comes.
Yeah, I think many of my colleagues said exactly what I was thinking and when Dawn ended on um, that I want to be positive here, I was sitting, when you. Said, take a minute, I was sitting here thinking, okay, what's gotten better since twenty eighteen in Antucket? Because it's, as Brooke said, the acceleration has just been crazy, the market. Um, of real estate and the cost to live here, there are essentially no more year-round rentals unless it's word of mouth. Um, it's extremely expensive to be be here, if you own property, your housing insurance has gone through the roof. Uh, building costs have gone up forty percent, like, it it's just. And in some ways, and I'm not a glass half-empty guy, but you can sort of sit here and be like, okay, well, what's not? What's better about Nantucket now, and then I think after being on the board and being in it, like, there's so many things as Brooke. Uh, said before of things that have taken our time away, right, because they're they're. They need expediency and I think to our credit, right, there's a lot of stuff with PFAS and and housing and. The offshore wind stuff that like, we didn't have to do, like, there was no state law saying like, oh, you must, you know. Settle the blade failure in a year or in record time or whatever, like, that that was, that was our, that was the town's doing and I think that. That. The macro conditions of real estate and cost of living and the influx of people and the traffic and all that. We've really done our best and it's really hard to communicate that to people, um, so I'm kind of left with a like. Things are kind of stressful and it's a lot, but like, we're doing our best in a tough situation to make the best of it. And there are things like the transfer fee, which is a total no-brainer, and we've been trying for twelve years now and we can't. Like, we we just can't get that through, that's something that we can do to help solve our own issue, but the rest of the world, I'm just gonna say, America. Whatever, hasn't kept up with us, so we can only do what we can do as a town and county. But we are doing our best and and I I'm really proud of the work that we've all done, especially uh. Before and since I've been on the board handling covid was probably next to impossible. For the members on the board there in the and the town and then after that, all the stuff we've we've leaned leaned into, uh, I look at like. Uh, now that I'm on the Board of Health, um, hearing about the PFAS presentations, it's so professional. And and I think we're like leaders in that, so I think there there's a lot of good that we do, so it's not all that.
Matt, how about yours?
Yeah, uh, a lot of it has been said, I I think. We're sort of, it it this, we're almost an on-demand island now. It we, when we were, we did the comp plan, I'll go back further than sixteen or whenever we're supposed eighteen, I'll go back into like two thousands. We talked about uh. Twelve months of August, we were worried that all the months were gonna like, we, at the time, the chamber was trying to make, you know, extend the season. And so that was what we were worried about and what we're in and we kind of, we did extend it some and it was. Longer and we had more people here year-round and we had, and then, but all of a sudden, you know, we keep adding uh stock to the island, we keep adding ability to people to be here. Short-term rentals, not shock-term rentals, just bodies here and we add more and more and there's nowhere for anyone to live. And because they're all here for five or six weeks and, you know, and we have to figure out how do we adjust that, so. It's been a, we we're on demand, it's, the island is more, so that's going way back, island is more. Everything is a commodity here now, it's a commodification of Nantucket. Your home isn't your home, it's it's your rental and it's your retirement and it's, you know, now we're turning it into it's an event space. If it's big enough, you can, we we do events here, we're gonna argue, and so everything is is kind of on steroids. And I think that that's, yeah, that's that's something we'll get into, I'm sure, uh. We've, we kind of have hollowed out our middle class. You know, the businesses are, it used to be some people, you know, you were middle-class running a business on Nantucket, now if you're running a business on Nantucket, you're. In the one percent or you're an outside investment firm running the business. And so, uh, it's, so we don't have like, you know, someone running a business making a hundred thousand a year. You're, it is, it is like a huge disparity on Nantucket of, you know, of people who are here, et cetera. And I think to, in a positive way, I think the communication is is better, I think I've done a lot of like sort of seminars on. Planning and consensus building and I think what we're we, what we're missing and why I think we should have everyone in one building is we are missing. Uh, consensus building, we're telling people what to think and why it's the right way to think. But a lot of times we're not asking them and if we do ask them, it's at a select board meeting where we have five or ten minutes. We don't, you know, and we're not bringing people into the process, you know, a lot, all the way along, we're doing it in a couple of things, we're doing it. Uh, down on uh Washington Street, we're doing it in a couple areas, but we need to do it and and it needs to just be part of how we operate. Is bringing people in and maybe it shouldn't take ten years, like they're doing with the mice, but it should. You know, depending on the issue, it might take three months, some might take two years. And we need to have that and honor the government that deals just with building that. Building that consensus and bringing, getting people's opinion and bringing everybody together and uh. You know, I I was the co-chair on the comp plan way back and it was hard to do that, but we reached, we didn't like. Just vote and move on, we reached, you know, consensus on all these different issues and I don't think that we. Do that as much now, I don't think.
Takes a lot of.
A lot of time and effort, yeah, and I think that, you know, the planning arm is so busy being the permitting arm. That how are they gonna do that, so then that all falls to someone else, that's falling off to the select board or falling off to. You know, coastal resiliency group has to try to do it for themselves or, so you know, or it's the, you know, you know, another, you know, another group of individuals with a couple. Town staff on it, like Washington Street where is, you know, bringing people in and talking to them, having meetings. But it's, you know, but we're getting fun, you know, we're getting private funding, that's donating money, so it's, we we were trying like. So somehow we need to bu- bake that into the, in into how we do things if we want things to be successful.
Well, and I hear in what some of you have said to this idea of everything's become a commodity that, um. And and somebody also said crisis, maybe maybe Tom or that said, you know, a lot of, a lot of crises that you're responding to. That what I hear in that too is that you all have had to, as a select board, be very reactive. You haven't had the opportunity to be proactive about things, um, and so perhaps that's why the priority list is as long as it is right now. Because you're trying to respond to things as opposed to you all being in the driver's seat, in part because of, go back to. The the impact of covid and how that has just, you know, you 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 said, it just speeded up. Speeded up. Thank you, it's much nicer word than speeded up. Yeah, that it it's been a huge increase. That that has been a, and I I want to come to um, to staff in just a second, um. But I I liked what Tom was saying about um, trying to be positive. And so, and Brooke shared, you know, housing, the appetite and the conversation around housing is different. Are there other things, is there anything that you can think about, um, that is better today than twenty?
Jet service.
Some good road improvements. Certain areas.
Not a ton of infrastructure investment, like, when I think about the sewer project. And that's been three years and it's just being wrapped up and will become invisible. And there for generations of people's waste, right?
So some infrastructure.
I think. Transportation, specifically Nerda, has absolutely knocked it out of the park.
Yeah.
Um, Gary, Gary's done a fantastic job and I think that's, that's a, he went from very low to very high. And building something right there.
Year-round free bus service. Is been unbelievable.
Other things that are better today than in twenty eighteen?
There are way more services available, personal services. And 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 that's the double-edged sword of more people being here, I'm talking about, I can get. There are bookkeepers, accountants, massage therapists, psycho psychotherapists. There are a lot more resources and maybe not so much since two thousand eighteen, but certainly, but when I, when people complain about there's more people here. I said, but there's also more resources, right? So there's more healthcare options than ever, there's more, um, and so growth. We now have a sustainable enough economy that people want to live here year-round and want to bring professional expertise here. And be here serving the community year-round and that is a sea change. Um, you know, uh, so, and I think we've paid more attention to human services and the quality of people's lives who. Maybe at the lower end of the financial spectrum than two thousand eighteen for sure, um. And.
There's still too many people. I'm sorry. It's nice we have more services, but we have too many people here.
Well, that's the double-edged sword, right, and so that's the sets expectations up that you can get, anything you could get on the mainland, you can get. Here is, yeah, yeah, and that may be part of that, that challenge, that that pressure that you all are facing, yeah.
I think another one is recreational opportunities, everything from little kids to, you know, like. The some of the new playgrounds that the land bank has built and, um, other, other places, there seems like there, there are more opportunities. For the public, some of them cost money, right, but 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 more opportunities for people to participate in other, that seems like a major part of our culture here. Is that year-rounders need to be outdoors year-round and or doing something, so, um. Again, besides the barrier of the cost, there there, to me, in the last, since twenty eighteen, there's a lot, there is a significant more. Uh, amount of options to do things like that.
Yeah, just to tag on with that, um, not only physical recreation, there's just a lot more social opportunities that aren't about sitting in a bar.
Yeah.
Than there ever have been and that's huge in terms of the health and welfare of the communities.
So other big picture question, you have lots of people moving here, why? What is it, what is it that people are looking for here?
The land bank's done a tremendous job of preserving open space and making it available to us. Um, it's driven up cost, uh, and that that's not as available other places. We still have these incredible historic resources that have all, downtown that have all been. Redone pretty much and look amazing, um. And I I know that there was a big push for it feeling safer here during covid. Um, and a lot of people haven't wanted to go back to the big cities and they're Zoom. Zoom has made it, so you can do pretty much anything remotely, um.
But I'm not sure that they're here, they're not here year-round.
But their their places are being maintained here.
Yes, the places are maintained year-round, they're here and then they leave for a while, they might come back for stroll, et cetera, then they're. Off in another house for three or four months in the winter and they back in the spring, if they're a long-term seasonal, they're back in the spring, I think that's, it's sort of.
And.
And and I'll push back a little bit on on the too many people thing, I don't think it's the people that's the issue, I think it's, it's the. It's the impacts that they bring, it's the extra cars, it's the parking on the sidewalk. It's the parking on the sidewalks. It's, you know, it, this, and there are, there are solutions to that. So I'm, I'm pushing back on that. I think that. It, it's, uh. It, it, as I say, it's, it's not the people, it's the bad things they bring. And if you can find a way to, you know, sort of. Move people around the island differently and, you know, and put different incentives in place so they don't do those bad things and, you know, and. Say no to certain things, you know, sort of like Turo, like I'm a lone wolf on that, but. There's certain things that I think, uh. You know, it's not necessarily just the people.
I disagree. Because the more people, there's still getting more, you can't ban cars. Wish you could. Uh, but those people are going to have more pollution. In our harbors, more septic systems, more sewer demands, more water demands. It's just island is not supposed to have this many.
No, no, but you have to, what my point is you have to say no on like the harbor, you have to say we can't have. Two thousand more boats in the harbor. You, you know, you have to set limits and you have to charge people for things. At some point to, to dampen the demand. And you can't have, everyone can't go to the same beach. You know, like places that manage their, you know, like the Milford track in, in New Zealand. Only so many people a day walk it. They don't let everyone walk it, you know, and so. We have something really special here that we have to do a little more of that.
So we have more regulations that we don't enforce.
Well, that, well, so again, we're back to the hottest. And the other thing I'll push back on is it's the, it's the conservation. The conservation has made us really nice. The conservation has also saved us a ton of money. If we had not conserved all that land, it would cost us more, us more money right now to service it. And all the sewers spread out everywhere and all the other costs that would have, we would have. If we had followed. You know, the cave and other areas in a building pattern, we'd be in worse shape than we are now. It's, it's just hitting us now. When I would say positive things that sort of now, I think. Some like, like you stole my thunder with NRTA, but I think some of the other, some of, there are other departments like that are really improved. From then till now, I'd say the finance department just keeps getting better. They've done a great job. And I think there's other. Parts of government that have, uh, that have improved. We have ways to go still, but I think that there's, you know. If you look back to back then till now, I think that we have become a lot more professional and, uh. You know, I, I, and so, and so it just. So I think that, you know, I think there's a pushback on that from people sometimes. Why do so many people? What are they doing? But the reality is we've done a lot better. We need those people and we've done a, we've done a good job. It's not recognized sometimes.
I would second that. I don't, not one to give out compliments, but. I think the professional staff here is one of the best I've ever seen. I mean, just go to our select board and listen to the presentations we hear. I mean, they're phenomenal. I've worked in a lot of places and they're really good. And that I think is, that is definitely improvement. I mean, we've lost, you know, we've lost dining flights, we've lost fairgrounds. Good people. No, but I mean, the staff is great. I agree. That's much better. When I came here in nineteen eighty, it was very different.
I, I think, I mean. I don't know how you stop people from coming as long as there is underdeveloped and undeveloped property, right? Ultimately, if you build structures that house people. There will be more people. And I don't, I don't see a path toward getting people to vote away their property rights because it has so much value attached to it. Um, and I don't think, Malcolm, we can. Put a gate up.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
So, so to Matt's point, it is about. It's about. Teaching, agreeing on a culture. That is Nantucket. And helping people understand the decisions we're making within a framework of these values and the culture that we wanna preserve. And protect. And, you know, from cover your load on the way to the dump, so I'm not on the side of medicant road picking up trash with town employees on a Friday afternoon. That's part of a culture, right? That, that we share this land. I, I was harking back to when I was a child. The trash, the, the litter campaign that had a Native American man with a gear, right? To have impactful communications that bring people together. With an idea of protecting this place and that, and that the take. Come here and take away everything you can take without giving. How do we communicate that that's not Nantucket? That is not the Nantucket we all want. And it will become, it's become attractive as a place to hide. From the world. I want Nantucket to be a place where you come and you become part of the community and you participate in building that culture. That's my big dream. Right? Um, don't come and sit around your. Twenty thousand square foot house with a swimming pool and a tennis court and never go anywhere. What's beautiful about Nantucket is the community. And the fact that whether we make thirty thousand dollars a year or have forty billion dollars in the bank. We literally physically are co-located together. And how do we capitalize on? The beauty of that experience as opposed to it. Being a competition for who gets to stay.
And that's why I asked the question, you know, what's different for you personally? And, and why are people moving here? So you have that in mind as you think about. All of the demands that, that the select board has choices to make about. How do those choices then impact that vision for what makes this island unique? That you want to preserve? Because if you don't stop and think about that, as Matt said earlier, about taking a little bit of a step back. And all you're focused on is the responding and the asks are gonna keep coming. There's gonna be more and more, there's gonna be more crises, there's gonna be more requests. How, how do you, how do you really focus what you can control? On those things that are gonna have the impact that ultimately you want it to have in order to create. Or to continue to have the island that. Is part of the culture. Because you can just keep trying to check things off the list, but if they're not working in alignment with that vision. You'll wake up in ten years and this will be a very different place again. So I asked the select board the question about what's changed, but we haven't heard from staff yet. So. I wanna, I wanna let, I think Libby's probably got a pretty big list. And so I wanna let her talk a little bit about, and certainly Rick and Greg too, about from their perspective, what's changed. From, from their vantage point since twenty eighteen.
Just since twenty eighteen, not since nineteen ninety five.
What can I launch in? Um, I did wanna add a positive to that thing, which is, I don't know if it's necessarily since twenty eighteen, but. We do have a lot of. More or less retired professional people here who are very giving of their talents and expertise to certain things. Um, I think of Habitat for Humanity, for example. There are. Some people involved in that group that, um, give a lot to the town and they, they. Probably things would not have happened the way they have without them. And, um. A lot of them are, a lot of people like this, whether they're seasonal or year round. They're, they're willing to give time and attention to the community and the, and the town itself, the municipal government. Although sometimes. Where they've come from, it is not a municipal structure. It's a corporate structure and it's quite different. So some of the principles of management can be applied in both, but not. Not everything to make things happen. So, but I will, I do wanna mention that we do, we are pretty lucky to have people like that in the community. Okay, buckle up on what's changed since twenty eighteen. Demands for off-island amenities, I, I put that in quotes. Regulations, we have more regulations, they're more complex.
Can I go back? So the first, I wanna. Talk about the first thing that you said, demand for off-island amenities. Talk a little bit about that.
Well, um, people want indoor rec centers. People want Starbucks. Um, even though they say they don't, they, they do. And they want, um. Like advanced things here. They wanna be able to get on and off the island quickly. And as if it's just, you know, go down to the boat, hop on and away you go. It's, it's not, it's not like that. As, as we know, people are subject to.
So it's expectations.
Like getting your car fixed within like twelve weeks.
That, um, that don't get done right away. And, and you're gonna, you might be able to get it done here, but you're probably gonna have to go off island eventual.
Ball field and a track. Well, it looks like everywhere else in the world, yeah.
Something at your house fixed. It, you know, even a, a simple thing. Um, so that's, that.
Nothing simple, nothing simple.
No, nothing's simple. Uh, complexity of regulations, um, fiscal issues. Our property values are astronomical. I was watching Channel Five yesterday morning. We had a little internal discussion. Nantucket is top five zip codes in state of the highest property values in, in, in the state. Um, that's nothing new to us, but it's significant. Hiring, retention, compensation, housing, that is very different than it was in twenty eighteen. Capital projects, I, I could go on at great lengths about capital projects. I'll just use that as the topic and maybe I'll go into it later, but. Cost is one thing, but there's a lot of behind the scenes that goes into it that is not well known by the public. Um, we have more municipal, we've had more added to our municipal operational scope. Since then, including real estate, communications, housing, stormwater, coastal resiliency, sustainability. And overall, uh, PFOs, although those things I just mentioned are actually divisions in departments. Cybersecurity is a definite issue. We have a more special, more specialized workforce and a more specialized staff. The workforce itself is changed. We are seeing a lot of people who either can't afford to or don't want to move here. To work for the town. They prefer to be remote or hybrid. And that in and of itself is a whole. Area of management that we have not even gotten a handle on. We're working hard on it. Vility, um, is, has changed definitely since twenty eighteen. Um, we have a lot of town employees who, who come in and say, I just can't, I don't wanna work at the front desk anymore. And I don't wanna go to meetings anymore. Um, because they're, they believe they're treated very badly. And a lot of times they are.
And that's. Significant again in a place like this. That, you know, we have, we hear that across the country. Lots of the themes, you know, that the city managers conference is coming up next week. I guarantee you, I know, cause I'm doing one of the sessions. Is on incivility, like that is a huge issue across the country, but to know that your own employees are facing it. Here is, is significant on top of all of the. Um, recruitment and retention challenges. I mean, and, and you all too, I mean, as, as elected officials. Incivility for elected officials is at a totally different level than it ever.
It's better here than most places, honestly. Just stay on social media.
Yeah, I, that's. People go on about how wonderful the Nantucket community is, and, and it is if you're in trouble. But, um, the social media. Um, I don't even know what to call this. Mob is by people we know. We, we are all working to make a better Nantucket supposedly, but, um, it's brutal on there. Whoever's on there, just get off. Um, PFOs is a, a complete change since twenty eighteen. Projects complex, complexity, federal implications, that's very new. But we've already won DEI grant assurances. We've spent a lot of time on those things. Just even since January, funding. Um, pu- public comment, we, we are, I may, may already mention this, we're working very hard at correcting misinformation. That comes out in public comments and other places as well. But, but it is, it is a lot of work. To, to get the facts out and try to make sure that people get, understand them. Um, in general, I feel like, and we've had some, a lot of internal discussions on this, Nantucket is a leader. In developing solutions and responses that are very unique to Nantucket. They, they can be used potentially in other places. But we have to figure things out here. And there's no model for us to look at. I don't care, no offense, what people say about Aspen. But it is not the same situation. And a lot of what they're doing can, either can't be done here or nobody's willing to do that here.
Or it's too expensive.
Or it's too expensive. We just don't have a model to look at. So we're, so we have to figure a lot of things out and we are. Deep into figuring out employee housing, municipal employee housing. We've heard about, a lot about, you know, Nantucket's unique and our transfer fee hasn't passed for twelve years. We, we also are. I, I, I think this is not well understood by people who live here who maybe don't. Travel around the state a lot or listen to people who in other towns. We're outnumbered by cities and towns that have huge problems. Gangs, violent crime, um, no money, homeless populations all over the place. Drug activity in the streets. We don't have a lot of that. At least it's not very visible. And those problems in those other towns outnumber us. So we don't get very far at the legislature with our. Issues. And we also. Like to talk about how different we are, so we need the special treatment and. I, I, Tom can probably speak to this a little better than I can, but I've heard it from other, from legislators, including our own. People get sick of hearing from Nantucket. And, and your special little problems. You have enough money, you go fix it yourself. That, that's what they actually have said. In, in some cases. So anyway, I just, so we're kinda on our own sometimes. And there, like I said earlier, there's hard choices that have to be made. That, you know, it takes a lot of political courage to get out someone. Okay, I'll rest.
Breaker, Greg.
It's changed since two thousand eighteen. I think we've become much more reactive than proactive. In two thousand eighteen, I think we had a very glossy, gozy look on the future and we were able to. Put together this plan and look at like, we're gonna try to accomplish, you know, in three to five year increments. And I think now we're just very reactive. We just. For all the things everybody's been saying, what's been coming at us, things from out of the blue, things not our own doing. And we're always playing catch up. And I think that puts a toll on us, but also on staff. So that's really kind of a challenge.
It just feels good. Doesn't feel good to be behind the eight ball all the time.
You're not really accomplishing anything. I mean, I look at it too. I mean, it's a terrible example, but like. The sewer force main is a really successful project that's completing, but it came out of a catastrophe. You know, like it wasn't, we weren't able to like be proactive with it, you know?
You haven't been here long enough. I think we're more proactive than ever.
Well, which is fantastic. Yeah, I've only been here like fifteen and a half years, so it might just. You know, looking at what, how we started our strategic plan to what we're able to accomplish now, but that. But that's really good. It was also very, very nice to hear professional staff. But I also wanna add to that, with the professional staff was a lot of work. A lot of work managing, which is wonderful. It's good. It's good to hear that. Um, there's, um. And you've kinda made a comment about just getting things done like. Two thousand eighteen, I could get a handyman to work on the house, anything. I, not now at all. I can't get an electrician. I can't get anything. Um, and you know, we have connections too, you know, friends. It's just, well, wait, I'll get you in the winter. It's really changed that dramatically. You know, procurement, and you kinda touched upon this, the whole project management, like. Procurement laws haven't changed. Chapter thirty B, store same one forty nine, whatever. We're trying to, the state's trying to change that. But it's changed for us, our ability to be able to stimulate competition or work within the state's requirements. And actually accomplish a project is, it's almost impossible now. Two thousand eighteen and before that we could. You know, but now like even fireworks are a great example, you know, we're paying like seventy thousand dollars a year or something like that on fireworks. Like he, cause we have to follow all the procurement and it's, it's a challenge. And we get one bit. So it's not like we have much of a choice. No competition there. Um, I think the focus on the environment has grown quite a bit, maybe more resiliency. Since two thousand eighteen, um, one of the tenants of the plan was environmental leadership and a really big focus on the landfill at the time. You guys remember and we had Jim there and Rita and it was all about the solid waste agreement and everything. But very little talk about coastal resiliency and that's such a huge thing now, um, among other environmental issues. Uh, the workforce, as we're saying, like, I think in two thousand eighteen, we still had a. Not the right way to say it, but an older workforce. And they, many retired. And so now coming in, trying to get any workforce who don't already have homes here. Is just that level of challenge. And then with that becomes our new challenge of remote. is just that level of challenge. And then with that becomes our new challenge of remote workers, hybrid workers. That is not easy, and then not just to manage that, but as we're now finding the tax implications and the actual payroll administration. Huge challenges. And people, like Libby said, coming to us, asking us, how is Nantucket doing? Cuz other places need to start looking at remote workers and like, don't follow us. And uh, I think, I don't know why, there's more direct contact from the public, at least in my world. Maybe it's because of social media and our emails are set up and our websites are set up, but whether it's PFAS or whatever, the direct contact of why isn't the town doing this? Um, and it's a good thing, bad thing, but it just takes a lot of time, and I think part of that is new people on the island will come from other locations who have different expectations, and they reach out more. And then just in general, social media has changed dramatically since two thousand eighteen, which probably lends to all of this, and so one of the positives of all this is I think our communications office is a real success. You know, and we're one of the few who have one, when we go down these needles and, and we're expanding it, you know, and we really need it, and even then it's hard. But um I think out of all this was the need for communication, and we stepped up with that.
Rick, how about you? What have you seen change over the time you've been here?
So, uh, so I've been on for five years, I'm going here, I haven't missed a summer since nineteen ninety, but so things that, that I guess my sense of gotten here. Um, this civility or incivility, whichever way you wanna put it, is, is really surprised me, and I think I've said it before. Has made the place a little less attractive for me, that we always thought we'd move up there, we always wanted to do that. And sometimes I'm just amazed by the um amount of anger in um some of the comments you guys are subjected to on a Wednesday night. Um, I think the other thing, which we've talked a lot about already is commercialization, but I, my we're at least, we're, we're in for another thirty or forty years, this just thing, the Hamptons was where we were in nineteen ninety. Where we are, sorry, the Hamptons were in nineteen ninety, where we are today. This is, this is just self reinforcing. More money attracts more people, more people attracts more business opportunity, a- and it's just gonna go, I, I don't know. I have no idea what we're supposed to do about that. And then just the last comment, which is, and a lot of talk about sort of the whales and the wind and, you know, racket and that kind of thing, and it, it's just really important to, for me to say that the town is not staffed or resources for, resourced for these adversarial events. They put an enormous amount of pressure um when we have to drop everything for something. Um, anyway, that's all, that has an.
It's, it's a snowball. It feels like a snowball.
We have a tremendous need for town council. That they need to be in on these things. People are, there's been more litigious issues.
And complicated.
They're very.
They're very complicated.
There is a growing conspiracy theory, people acting on con- conspiracy theory, and I would say the FOIA request situation and the, and the thinly veiled or not so thinly veiled accusations of wrongdoing. Um, but the, but that a lot of time and energy is needed to respond to that. Um, is, it's disheartening, honestly.
Or misinformation.
Well, misinformation's one thing. It's, it, it is one thing for someone to not understand and ask a question. It's another thing for someone who doesn't believe to make an accusation. And this idea that I, you didn't do what I wanted, so there must be something unforid happening as an undercurrent is very, very disheartening to me. The, the, the grace that most people give that we are doing our best, as Tom put it, seems to be eroding, and I don't think any one of the five of us, or any of us sitting at this table, aren't aren't here because we believe and love this place and we wanna do our level best to make life here good for everybody. But the idea I don't get my way, so you must have done something terrible um or inappropriate, really, really gets under my skin, I'll be honest with you.
People start the public comment by saying, you know, it, it's clear that, you know, Matt beats his wife because he's not in favor of this and the other, and he should stop beating his wife and blah, blah, blah. So then they, they have their say. And then the, you know, and then we answer it, and we, we, and we're not gonna do this, I hope anymore, but then we'll repeat the whole thing again. We give it air again. When we, you know, so then we say, oh, you start the whole thing again, and, and so, and we have to sit there quietly and not and not defend ourselves, cuz it's public comment, and you have to let people say whatever they wanna say. State's crazy, but it, a- and that, and it really, people have figured out how, the angle of how to use that as a weapon, how to dig at you. And it's really.
And it, it's resource diverting, right? So like, just one article that says there's mold out at Loran probably led to ten hours of staff time to research fully all, you know, get all the details about everything we've done at Loran uh to, to respond to public comment. I mean, it's just, it's a real resource.
There's not, to break your point, people don't assume good intent. Anymore. They assume the.
Some people, an increasing number of people, but I can tell you, I wanna be clear. The lion's share of people I engage with in this community are appreciative of the efforts of the select board and town administration. The lion's share, but the voices of, of, of mistrust are growing.
So I, I just add something, but Brooke made me think of this when she was talking, uh something positive that I think that is heartening as a select board member, is something, and I've talked to other select board members in other towns, like when we go to MMA, and a friend on the Outer Cape who serves. Is that the five of us, although we disagree on some issues, and we'll split votes occasionally and things like that, none of us are working actively against each other. Either in meetings or behind the scenes, and like, if that was happening, I would be out. Cuz that's, that's not why I, you know, I think we do a good, I can, we do a pretty good job on consensus, although we have a lot to work on. Obviously, but at least the collegiality and the like, hey, we're all here on a Wednesday night. We're executive the next morning, and then we have the strategic planning, and then we have to go to Board of Health or Capcom or like whatever, like what, we, we all are cognizant that we, that we're trying to do our, our best, even though we disagree occasionally, so I that is heartening to me as one board member.
That's, that's significant. So let's take a break, let you all stretch your legs a little bit, um get some of those homemade treats. Uh, and um when we come back, then we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you to kind of reflect on what you heard in light of what's in the strategic plan today. So, take about ten minutes. It's ten to twenty, so we'll come back at ten thirty.
What's that? Yeah, I know, I remember that.
I got, I got stuck on Surfside Road.
Oh, yeah, Surfside, as in orange, part of Orange.
Yeah, but, but, and then I was sitting in the car and I was thinking, those folks who live if had to go through the milestone project, like, and sit in that every day, you know, reaps on end. I, I, I developed a newfound empathy for traffic. You know, stress. So, and I, I was, my mantra was, it's getting finished, it's getting finished.
It is a mindset though, cuz I was just spending two weeks, we have a place in South Boston, I was up there for two weeks, you know, like, sell it. And every day I was sitting in traffic and just throwing in, it was traffic, traffic and a detour. My, my street, my entire street was blocked off, had no idea why. But I just accepted it cuz it's a city. You don't, you know, you just deal with it. But here, I'm like, just, it took me ten minutes to get here.
Greg, you didn't send a strongly worded email to the mayor?
I did not. I went to Dunkin' Donuts.
I went to a wedding. There were five weddings there.
In where?
Five weddings. All at the same time. And it's funny, right? It's bigger than I thought it was. Yeah, but my goodness, it was.
Yeah. To some extent.
Thank you.
Oh.
I realized when you did.
Yeah. We'll also say something soon.
Okay, you're all ready to get back at it? Got a couple of minutes. So and I'm gonna put you on the spot, Greg, before you take the mic. Um, will you talk a little bit about the handouts that you have here? In your existing, for your existing strategic plan, cuz now I wanna um bring us all back to your current strategic plans, um what, what's in it, what some of, what your focus areas are for your strategic plan? And then I'll ask you to reflect on, given all that you've talked about, that's changed. It does, do the focus areas and some of those key initiatives still reflect where you think the community and the organization needs to be focused?
Uh, so in the packet, we should have said that earlier, you have a memo from Michelle, as well as the agenda, so that's kinda water on the bridge. But you have that, but then um we do have a little bit of update of our current strategic plan. I put a, a cover memo on it that you guys can read later, just kind of um overall health of the strategic plan. Uh, you'll see with, between this little memo and then the page that has like a bunch of um very colorful charts that go with it, is the dashboard that we've been using to track it for the past year. Uh, the focus area leaders have been outstanding. They provide feedback, and I only asked it for a couple of times, so we weren't overwhelming. Uh, where they are on the various of initiatives that support the goals. So before we go into them, just as a, um in general, you know, based on um a plan that's becoming mature, it's not yet considered mature, but it is, you know, seven years really, you know, in, in progress. Um, we're making really good headway. Um, goals are dumping, those are elusive, right? So we're less than ten percent completed on any of the goals, but that's because many of the goals that's been identified take multiple fiscal years. They're costly, some are complex, sometimes there's resource issues, and then not meant to be accomplished in one year. Initiatives, on the other hand, we're doing uh pretty, pretty well. We're about fifty-two percent completed on initiatives that the board has approved over the past couple of years, and that shows some significant progress. So based on uh best practices, that's considered almost uh, that's the, which of the world's a green, very strong performance and almost a mature um strategic plan. So it's really timely for us to start looking back, but it's not. So overall, using like the regular green and yellow, red type thing, we're doing pretty well. Overall, the, the health of the, the, um the strategic plan is, is strong. Um, it's just time to reevaluate, is this what's being called moving the needle? Is this what's being called moving the needle in the right direction? And do we need to reevaluate? So refresh everybody's minds, um, and using kind of like the packet here that has kind of an English dashboard on it. Um, going through the, there are five focus areas and the five focus areas are housing, transportation, environmental leadership, effective and efficient town operations, and healthy envi- um, vibrant community, uh, communities. And, um, the dashboard you show kind of overall where we are in the progress, but also how much money we appropriated or dedicated towards these. And we're up at about $98 million that's committed to all of our initiatives, which supports the goals, which supports focus areas. And that's not insignificant. That's actually pretty, pretty, pretty big. Um, the, the strongest focus area, I didn't want to say strongest, but has made the most accomplishments, the biggest strides, based on the initiatives that have been approved by the select boards, um, has been the housing focus area. I think part of that is because of the dedicated housing office that was created really for this. They're looking just at housing and the initiatives that the select board has approved. So Chrissy and her team have pretty much completed almost all of their initiatives. And as you all know, there's quite a bit of money that's been dedicated in one way or another. Um, just for perspective, it's the brown page. Um, and, um, the initiatives are listed on there as well as the goals. And, and they're making some really good, you know, progress. Their goals aren't completed, but the initiatives are, you know? So they have to keep working towards them and, and they'll get there. But, um, I won't go into each individual one yet, Michelle. Like that might be something that the board wants to look at later, just want to refresh their memories.
Yeah.
Um, the next page is the, um, it's more blue. It's a, uh, transportation focus area. That's also, this is a very strong, uh, focus area based on, you know, the, the measurements that I've researched on how to assess the health of a strategic plan. And, uh, that, um, that, uh, program is, is led by Drew, the DPW director, who's been up, done outstanding work on this. Um, there's, there's roughly, um, $43 million committed to all the initiatives. But as you can see, many of the initiatives aren't completed yet because they're long-term initiatives. Some are capital, mostly are capitals. So they need to be budgeted, then they need to be bid out and we have to have the right resources. And some six are sequential. So, um, Drew has been doing a really good job trying to manage them. He works with Mike Burns, the transportation planner. And overall, um, they have the most initiatives. So they're very, very busy. So just you can ref- we can re-familiarize ourselves with them in a minute. But like the next page, which is kind of a log green, pea green, um, is the environmental leadership focus area that's been led by Jeff Carlson, the, um, natural resources director. He's been doing an outstanding job. And that's why we're talking to him. This is a, a unique one because many, the strategic plan has a strong sustainability focus. That's kind of the overall mantra, you know, that we decided years ago. And that's a lot of what Jeff and his team do. But in the, the actual initiatives, a lot of the stuff that they're working on, such as the coastal resilience plan, which the board adopted in 2019, um, they're not laid out in here. So a lot of work that Jeff and this team are doing, whether it's with Washington Street Corridor, Easy Street, um, the Baxter Road or, um, Medicaid at, um, Ames Bridge. You know, they're not even in here and they're working a lot on that. So that's just something to think about, like what, what was intended by environmental? And, but they're doing an outstanding job and, uh, it's quite a bit committed to, to it. And, um, they've been making some really good progress. Efficient and effective town operations, which is the next focus area, has been lent by Rick. Um, and that was our newest focus area. Uh, we, we kind of adopted that two years ago. So it's pretty like the strategic initiative, the initiatives are not probably as vetted out as they probably should be. But what we do have Rick and his team, like working with Mike Alvarez and others have been doing a great job. So that, but some of the things are out of our control, like a new DPW complex, a new central municipal facility. You can't work on them if they're not approved. And then the final focus area.
One's on bold and that.
What's that?
Which is on hold in this.
Um, on hold, the initiative, so I would say DPW. So if you look down below where it says completed as of 10/1.
Yeah.
Where it says no, like our New Island phone facility.
Yeah.
That's so, and like. Right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I know we.
We have no, no vocalizing. It's just, it's hard, you know? Um, and the final one is healthy environment community focus area. So two years ago, this was changed from, uh, quality of life focus area. Um, it was a big discussion here two years ago about not having anything worried about healthy communities and how working with actual health of the communities from mental and, and, uh, physical health. And, but because of that, it's, is probably the least, um, populous, um, strategic, uh, uh, initiatives. No, I don't think it was, uh, vetted out that much. So I spoke with Roke, um, the director of public health quite a bit. And he has a few areas that range from like tics and other, you know, diseases that he'd like to put on here to start focusing on, they just weren't included before. Um, so can't really report out on the good work they've been doing because it's not, not part of it. It's also the least, I don't want to say funded, there's only about 145,000 that's been committed to these initiatives that can be cross-referenced. You know, of course they, the whole staff works on everything, but just in general. So that's everything in a nutshell. And we didn't, we decided we weren't going to go down piece by piece, but just kind of refresh you guys on what the focus areas are. Um, I remember Julia saying early on, and actually enough that I remember that, um, Janice, that, oh, remember Janice, um, there should be no more than three focus areas. We had six to start with, we got them down to five. So that's just something to consider, not saying it take any away, but that's just a lot of work, you know? For you guys, as well as staff, as what you're trying to accomplish. And I think anything, just reading strategic planning stuff and best practices is the more focus areas you have, the less you're actually really trying to accomplish. And so just kind of getting that out there. But overall, like there's a lot of work the staff have been doing towards the, the, um, implementation of the strategic plan, a lot of good successes. And some of the, the hurdles and stalls are just out of our control, not approved or what have you. So that's in a nutshell. And also the, the actual brochure is in there too, from last October's update.
I think what's helpful in the, in the brochure is reading the, um, the aspirational statements, you know, what you're trying to accomplish in each of those focus areas to see again if it still aligns with what, what you would envision. Questions about anything that Greg shared or about any of these focus areas or the initiatives in the focus areas?
Well, do we move, uh, do we move coastal resiliency into, uh, it's in the healthy community, right? And do we move that to, uh, uh, to the environmental leadership section?
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that would be one suggestion I would make is to move that for the people who are working on it.
Other questions or comments about any of the focus areas or the existing initiatives? And Greg, maybe you can clarify, the, the focus area initiatives, to the extent that they can be worked on, that's what the teams are focused on, correct?
Correct. Like, for example, the public health director has been doing a lot of work with tics and things like that, which is very, but it's not in the, and the plan and the identification of a healthy environment community, but he would like to have that added in. A lot of work they do and he also envisions that that is something that is very positive for the community.
Well, and, and do we think about that more broadly than, than individual vectors of disease or health risk, right? Do we talk about, um, you know, ill, uh, prevention of illness or, you know, as a broader term that includes tick-borne illness, vaccination programs? Cause I know they're working, you know, on a lot of different areas that are around, um, disease prevention, maybe is the phrase we want to use or something like that, rather than identify tics specifically and then work on the tics falls under that.
Yes.
Greg, do you think to your statement about that too many area, like it was six and now it's five, then too many areas could mean less actually gets done? I'm kind of looking at healthy and vibrant community and thinking about what you said with talking to Rocky and all that. Do you think maybe that it should be kind of redone as kind of public health? In, because healthy and vibrant community is a great aspirational statement, but it's a little amorphous. I mean, you'd fit probably literally anything into it and maybe tightening it up to public health initiative. I don't know what the title would be, but public health initiatives, like kind of what Brooke was just saying, like tics and, um, disease vectors and, um, um, kind of the purview of, of what the health department does. Seems like it's a little bit more town operations focused than it is kind of writ large for the community.
Yeah, but truly a few guys to discuss, but that makes sense. But don't forget this came out of the quality of life focus area. So I think when it was discussed the last couple of times, we looked at from the point of being of making people happy on Nantucket, how, you know, it's a quality of life. But early initiatives we had were playgrounds and recreational opportunities for, and they kind of morphed. But I think maybe we just threw health in there and not really thought it through, like you're saying. So I don't disagree with what you're saying, but also that's not a focus of the, or like that's just public health doing its job and we all support it, maybe it doesn't need to be in there, like, cause they're doing it. Or if that's something you want more of and really to focus on, yeah, absolutely, it makes perfect sense.
The year-round rec initiatives have been brought up a few times. And I do think that that ties into the health, um, having something that's weather controlled to service the population.
Yeah. And, and P plus, right? And we can, we can think of recreation not only as indirect, but, you know.
I, I do feel like we have a ton of outdoor recreational opportunities, but it's cold.
Yeah.
But I don't know that it's for us to solve completely. Yeah, I do, I do think that it is a little bit of a.
I mean, in terms of it being a reason to keep this category separate, because there are things that, um, that don't cross over into it. I mean, when I think about a healthy and vibrant community, I think of year-round housing, right?
Housing, transportation, actually all, all the others.
Yeah.
Related to.
They all. So I think it's important to keep an eye on it separately. I, I mean, I was, I was really focused on this two years ago. Um, uh, largely from my experience as chair of, um, human services, council, human services and, and, um, trying to make sure that, again, that, that the health department, right? Public health department isn't just focused on enforcement of health regulations, but that it's thinking more broadly about how do we make sure the experience of living there is safe and healthy for everyone? Beyond the enforcement role.
But the public health director, you know, I have what he wrote, um, yes, it gives some ideas like improved surveillance, the impact of influenza, of influenza, COVID and RSV on Nantucket, for example. Um, continue the monitoring of wastewater for the health of the community, to gauge the health of the community. Um, and to, he proposes an ARV, uh, ARV virus programs, ticks and mosquitoes, um, which is vibrant, very important for health. Those are the type of things that.
I think Rock, he's really trying to get away from just being a regulatory function.
Be more proactive.
I mean, you look at his background, his background is, is a CDCer, so.
And, and really, our job is is to decide where that sits relative to everything else, right? In terms of allocating resources. Um, and so.
I like your comment of disease progression or prevention.
Yeah.
Cause that's essentially what a public health department does. I would love, I would love to add, uh, monitoring the number of accidents with bikes and e-bikes and everything else. I would love somebody gathering that data and getting it from year to year. Because it's, uh, we had a really bad summer this summer. And we had some very serious accidents. And I think that, you know, it would be great to have that as a focus so that we can, you know, sort of see what things can we change? And if we change things and it makes things better, it'd be great not to see it.
So I think that in my mind falls under the bigger question of enforcement, regulation and enforcement. And to me, that falls more under efficient town operations. It, it, it's, it, it morphs into public health in terms of accident prevention. But if I were to do one, if I were. We are being asked by the community to control other people's behavior through regulation more than ever, right? People are frustrated by the behavior of other people, whether it's short-term rentals or e-bikes or anything else, right? And we are, we are being asked to regulate more. Um, Ron Karst, Turo. Um, I think we need to think about regulations and the enforcement thereof as its own pocket of administrative work. Because right now it's done in such a disparate fashion across all departments that we don't really have, now obviously health has their own, you know, stuff, but, um.
I believe the police chief has some suggestions.
Yeah, and then.
And I'd say.
Because, because bandwidth, we, we hear a lot of regulate this, regulate this please, and a lot of, but you've set up regulations and they're unenforced. Well, that's all about human resources in the end, right? A regulation is useless, um, you know, speed limits are useless unless you have enough police officers on the street, you know, to issue tickets. So I'm not saying we should go back to the Wild West, but how do we?
No, but you can't. You can't manage something if you don't measure something. So, so I'm asking that we find somebody who measures it. And because when BPAC has asked for it to be measured, what we, we run up against, that's not legal. We can't do that. The hospital won't do this. We can't do this. All these reasons and no one's looking and saying, how do we actually do this? We need someone to say, how do we get the best number? What are the best numbers we actually can get? And how do we do this? Because I, you know, and, and it has slowly gotten worse until the point this year, I think it was, you know, it was a crisis. So now we, now typically we would deal with it because it's a crisis, so.
Let me go back to, we were talking about healthy and vibrant community as being one of your focus areas that started as quality of life, which is a very broad category. You all have talked about now it's morphed into or been changed two years ago to healthy and vibrant community. That's still a very broad category. I think, Tom, you even said that, there's a lot that can fall in that bucket. As I heard you talking, you've put a lot in that bucket, everything from recreation to public health, to enforcement in some way, shape or form. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to think about focus again, back to our realistic focus. In this focus area, how, how can, or how would you all define? Is healthy and vibrant community what you're after, what you're trying to create? Enforcement can be the how, you're gonna, gonna get there. But before we can get to the how, that's the reactive part again, enforcement's the reactive part. What is it that you're trying to achieve? So that you all can be very explicit about what's going to fall in this bucket? Cause it's a big one. And everything that you just said that's changed can all go in this bucket if you're, if you're not careful.
It will work.
So we're adding, and I can see living.
It's almost like healthy and vibrant community um, should be in the mission. And then the strategy are like housing, transportation, environmental leadership. And then you have your initiatives under those, but just, it just strikes me as more missional and it's.
Part of the quality of life. Yeah, there's a little bit of that, like that's everything. You, you want people to, you know, be safe and how you do that, maybe you have to have more regulation to help guards, either from a disease prevention issue or from a transportation-related perspective. You're gonna put more. Either from a disease prevention issue or from a transportation related perspective, you're gonna put more regulations in place to do that. But I think, I think that's kind of the question that I would put out to you all is this is a broad category. Does it need its own? Focus area, does it need to be better defined so that? There's clarity on what those initiatives should be. Otherwise, I worry that you're back to what we've talked about and it's a huge bucket that. You can set some really, really large expectations.
Do we need it at all if it's, if it's encompassed in the other areas? And just putting those.
That's what we discussed two years ago. We cut with this, we eliminated it and then it kind of.
Snuck back in.
So great.
Well, I I mean.
I I don't think we need it as a separate. I think this is encompassed by a whole strategic plan. I like your idea of putting it in state.
Yeah, it's a big question. Yeah, is it, it, I think I held on to it because there was a specific initiative I wanted to put in here, which was the needs assessment and the revaluation of. Right, the human services department to make sure that didn't. Crash and burn. At a time when it turns out there's more and more need in the community today than there was even when we had that conversation two years ago. So that's my only concern is that we do not lose sight of the fact that. There will always be people in our community who struggle. And how do we be the key? It's a values thing for me. How do we be the community that we gorge or? Or declare ourselves to be a caring. Community that looks out for each other. That is like the. The hallmark of what people say they love about this place. I don't want to lose that. So however we preserve that is what's important to me. Um, and I don't know that there's enough specific initiatives beyond what is already the purview of the health director and the health department. Um, and I believe that human services is back on track. So I would be good with letting it go and making it more of a value thing that goes in the mission statement.
Yeah, I I think that would be, I think that would be fine. My only other possible, just to throw it out there would just be to. This makes it sound cheap, but rebrand it as like public health and vibrant community and then basically take Rocky's. Narrative and what he enumerated there. And sort of have that just as a focus of like, yeah. The health department is part of the town, but but it's sort of there. It's through us, right? Kind of, kind of part, but. Putting the other stuff like recreation or or whatever, maybe that's unnecessary. Um, and then to Matt's point about e-bikes, I don't see any reason why we couldn't just tuck that into transportation. I mean, Burns is working on that already. And like with the chief suggestion and what we're gonna talk about for the warrant in the spring, just add it to initiatives underway, right?
Yeah, no, I was, but the reason I thought about it here was I was thinking, who can, if. You know, if we have a public health person who's talking in the hospital and has contacts and can pull that information out from that perspective, but it is. But maybe Mike Burns should be asking for that helper, you know, and I'm not saying we want individuals' names. We just want to know how much is this happening and how bad is it?
Can legally get that information and there's a help issue.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up and and it's interesting, what I've been told multiple times, a feedback has been told. Is, oh, well, if it involves a car, it has to be, you know, it has to be listed and we know that that happened because the cars. Are, you know, by law are required to have a. A report for insurance purposes. But if it's a, you know, a biker into a walker or, you know, two bikers into each other, et cetera, we don't have records of that. Which is kind of crazy, we're, you know, we care more about vehicles, you know, and and insurance than we do about people. Running, you know, so it's just crazy, but anyway.
Um, just to respond to the, how we're gonna do this, it's not as easy as it sounds. The hospital, we, and we've had a recent discussion with them because we want to do some videos on e-bikes with interviews with ER doctors. The hospital does not track. And they are not required to track e-bike accidents as a broad category. They don't even know sometimes if there was an e-bike involved. Um, the person doesn't have their bike with them. They come in and maybe somebody has said, oh, this was because of an e-bike, but they're not gonna put that anywhere. So there's that, the the challenge of getting definitive information from where the people end up. To who responds to the call? And police and fire are, uh, we'd have to have a detailed discussion with the chiefs about how that information is captured and where it is. Reported.
Accessed after, yeah.
Well, yeah, and it does, it depends a lot of times on on how the information is put into the system. And it isn't the same person putting it into the system every time. That's impossible. But. It it. Different people have varying degrees of what they put in to describe the incident. So it's.
Never mind which class of e-bike.
Well, there's that, I mean, we could really drill down into this and make it.
This would be a legible thing, like getting.
So I want to come back to, I want to come back to housing, but so what I heard, what I heard you all talking about is. Removing healthy and vibrant community as a focus area. But reimagining a little bit of the mission statement to ensure that it captures. Really what that first sentence is in the aspirational statement about creating a vibrant, inclusive community committed to the. Health and well-being of its residents and visitors. Which is kind of, it is kind of there, I think. And the question that I had, this is maybe for for Libby or or um Brad or Rick. The public health initiatives, not initiatives, the public health actions that you all talked about, the work that Rocky's doing. Would he be doing that even if it wasn't in the strategic plan?
As a matter of fact, we do strategic plan funds for him to do the bio. Thing, you know, with the wastewater and and what we kind of missing here too, because it's not any initiatives, but the help, the manager of. Uh, health and human services, a jerkum, um, has said before that there's, we give out like eight hundred thousand dollars in grants to local. Nonprofit confined services, it's not even listed in here.
So there's a lot that happens that's not part of the strategic plan that will. Those things related to some of the disease prevention and other public health work is part of the normal course of business. And so. Perhaps it doesn't need to be explicitly called out here. And are you all comfortable with that? So removing health and vibrant community as a focus area. We're down.
And for, you know, ticks and mosquitoes and creating a program to survey and the impact of influenza COVID and RSV. Could those be initiatives for this next? Implementation process, so in in probably in efficient government. To make sure that we set up these. Programs or whatever he's looking for specifically, they give me the specific details. Could he ask for, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
To me, it's really about. Him and his department and their and their budget ask to be near rather than us directing it. I want, I want to. He's the pro for us to be. It's being done. Everything is being viewed through the lens of coastal resilience that I've seen. So is that a new initiative? Is that an initiative? No, it's just an ongoing part of town operations now. Um, as an example, like it started and now it's just. Operationalized.
No, but there's, there's aspects of it that might need attention. So that's.
Yeah, I think we'll get into some of that. So, so I think that what I heard, and I just want to make sure that there's unanimity about that is. That just because it's not here doesn't prevent him from doing this. That's part of regular operations as in. Things that other departments are going to be doing that aren't necessarily called out. So just because the select board hasn't listed it here, doesn't mean it's just.
Sounds good.
Is there anything on these initiatives, the bullet points that we do want to make sure we don't lose sight of that might go into? Another focus area that we, like community needs assessment is completed, you know, so there's no.
Well, it's the community needs assessment is underway.
And I meant the RFP and everything we did.
Yes, the the um assess the towns. Between the, what's it called, the contract review thing, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's bullet point three on goals.
Oh, it's goals, yeah, yeah.
It's completed.
The piece here is the equity. Um, that has become very challenging and difficult under the current civil environment. And I think, safe to say. It's a little bit of a toxic. But I also believe we have shifted how we think about this, wouldn't we say?
And we're gonna do it, we're doing it anyway. We're doing the right thing anyway. We're treating everyone.
Assume good intent.
Yeah.
Yes.
So do we, do we need to have? A specific initiative? Even if I thought we did, I'd be loathe to put it in print right now. Because of the downstream effect on.
We see that happening in a lot of communities. That they've had to code the language or just not put it in. Particularly in something that the governing body adopts.
And I do think.
Yeah, there's a lot of quality in it.
And that's happening.
That's happening.
I like what Rick said before about. Kind of that it's mission driven, a lot of it, and maybe I think the aspirational statement is really good and either tucking that into. The letter from the chair or the mission statement or wherever. Kind of tying that in may be the best way of saying it.
The only other piece that, you know, we talk about economic vitality. And there, there's sort of like a. We talked about growth, as it were, and. I think of this in terms of an economic balance. Right? Uh, whether we think we're, we're overgrown, undergrown. Moving along at the right pace, whatever one's feeling is about it. I do think it's really important for us to. Think in terms of when we're making decisions, the economic health of the island. It, in the not too much and not too little framework, right? And how? It's. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, but um. There are people who, you know, need new opportunity to start new businesses and to, and to support their family's. Life here. Um, and there are people who wanted to. You know, we're done, we don't need more. Just be mindful of that, that that economic stability impacts quality of life. Tax revenue, like all of it, so how that intersects. And I use the phrase economic balance.
Then there are some things that tie into. Land and and so on, we don't, we have a lack of. Commercial real estate. Businesses can really be viable.
No more film productions.
Anything else on healthy and vibrant community?
Just wanted to make sure.
Moving away from that one. So then let's go back to the other focus area. So start with.
I know, we went all over the place again.
Bringing you back.
The only thing that I'm gonna say is I. Safe Harbor has been a very big. Bowl of ours, and I think we're doing a great job at that. Um, getting to the right numbers is something we're all, we're gonna continue to chase. Um, but I think we definitely need to prioritize availability of. Specifically year round. And we're doing the pilot program to try and incentivize that. We need more resources. In that bucket.
And I would say, um, I haven't had a chance to read the remain housing Nantucket report on housing needs. But I think that there's a lot of anecdotal evidence about what we need in housing. And I think we should lean into. Date, uh, securing enough data that we're prioritizing the right investments in housing. With town, with, with taxpayer dollars. And, and we have a lot in land right now. So, but we're moving.
Michelle, do you want to let go systematically to view the aspirational statements and how we're?
Yes, and I'm gonna ask you to think about, um, again, in this vein of. Focus, are there things that are on this list right now that don't rise to the priority level? Given all of what you've talked about that has changed. So in housing, what I, what I. Just talked about is the idea of. Safe Harbor year round housing as a focus. Are there other things within housing that either are not on this list or that you would take off? And that don't reflect, does that aspirational statement still reflect where you believe? You need to be.
None of that's changed.
Yeah, I I was gonna say, I think the goals themselves are all active. And underway in one way or another. The initiatives underway, we could probably remove some of that because they're done. And we may or may not want to add more, but the goals, um, some of the goals are sort of also initiatives. Like, for example, um. Evaluate the potential for a coordinated housing effort for public employees across municipal operations, the second goal. And that, that is very actively happening. But.
There should be initiative, really.
Yeah. The initiatives, um, the employee housing focus group is. Not. We're gonna, we have to reevaluate that because that, that became a little difficult when we were talking about. Subsidies and who gets housed and things like that because it might not be them. Or it might be them and. It 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 gets a little complicated.
So that stays on, but it's.
Well, I don't, I, I, I don't know if that's an initiative that we want to, like, that sort of can just happen ad hoc. I don't know if that. Employee housing focus group. We, we sort of started it, but it quickly. We consult.
It doesn't need to be on here.
Seasonal communities designation done.
However, done.
Yeah.
But implementing. Is, I would say implementation, just add the word implementation.
Yeah, I agree.
And wait, drive seasonal dormitory is done.
None, anyway. The municipal preferences.
What, what we need to, back to the wait, drive seasonal dorm, what, what we do need to sort of. But finish out is. The use of it in the off season, because we've had a lot of discussion about. Um, having it be emergency housing or housing for consultants or housing for remote employees or hybrid or whatever. So, but we haven't really developed the solid point yet.
Initiative would probably be how we handle off season housing, not necessarily wait drive.
We even need it on the list, though. It's underway. It's like, it feels like an administrative.
Yeah.
How do we?
It's like.
It's part of either our town employee housing. Policy. Guidelines, which um, I, I, so I think it's.
It's, it's, it's back to the, it's like the focus groups. It's how you're gonna do it. You're gonna, so it doesn't.
Yeah.
I think what I heard you say is it doesn't need to be on this.
No.
Yeah.
But I, but I am hearing that town employee housing policies and guidelines is something we, that is sort of a, a new priority.
And it's underway, yeah.
Closer to done, so we don't need to name it.
We could throw it all in that complete.
Or we should be saying, do we say something like we want to, you know, procure or build that's money units this year?
That's more.
I think we, I think we want something specific.
We want to determine how many is enough.
Yeah.
We haven't even had that.
Yeah, I don't think we're very far away from the, what I'll call the town employee strategic housing strategic plan.
Mm hmm.
Um, I, we've gone, Christine and I've gone through it a few times and it's in pretty good shape, but it's just not done yet, so. Um, but it does have the target, it says, it'll say over five years, we want to get to, I mean, that fifty units, right? Because if we can agree that here, then it makes it easier for us to think about how we sequence things, like do we build wait drive first, are we looking at Oracle, are we looking at Tacoma Way? How many, you know, goes in each, each place, so anyways, we're pretty close. Christie, I wish.
Yeah, I, because I think the strong, even some of the people who are uh sort of the most critical of housing are, are not, when, when I talk to them, they are supportive of the town housing its employees. So they, you know, so if we show them that that is happening and the money isn't just going to, you know, some, to businesses that, so that they can, you know, you, you know, it isn't going out to other people and why not me? If it's the town employees that are providing all the services and stuff we need, people are supportive of that and it would build more momentum for the other, if that becomes, you know, so.
Well.
That's how I look at it.
And, and I, I would, I might suggest that you do consider something in here. If you are ultimately going to be putting resources in that area and you know that as a body now, then this becomes part of your communication piece to the community to say just that. That you, this select board has committed to putting resources and therefore may not have resources for something else because you have made this a priority, if that's what you choose to do. So if you all know that's something that, that will be coming forward at some point and you all will be deciding on, then articulating that here, I think helps set up the conversation about what perhaps you don't.
Mm hmm.
Okay. I, I would add inter-board coordination on housing strategy as an initiative, like we've started it already, but continuing that joint boards so that we're all growing in the same direction. Um.
And Libby, you're already working on a follow up for that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you thinking about tomorrow night? Anyway, I'll find out.
No, no, like the, the, with planning board and A H T and Board of Health. It's the second. Yeah, I think there's another, there's a second iteration of that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, that, yeah. So do you want to be specific about that, having at least one meeting of all that by, you know, this time next year, like?
I mean, it feels similar to the, what I kind of back with from MMA.
Yeah.
I, I agree that we need to.
Yeah.
Have everybody kind of understand.
I don't know if the joint meeting, a lot needs to be on here.
I would, I would say, um, it's about, it's about, it's about continuing inter-board and inter-board collaboration on housing or something like that, more general. And that could be a semi-annual joint meeting that becomes codified and regular, and by the way, on the calendar a year in advance. So we don't have to try to schedule thirty people, right? This save this date six months from now.
Mm hmm.
Would be ideal for something like that, it's just something we do as a town until housing is solved.
Rick, you're looking at me.
I'm trying to figure out if something that we do, Greg, Rick and Libby, because most of these are initiatives for town staff or you guys do because you're the board, connecting with other boards, it's, it's um. We have one, it's not unlike the initiative to increase the diversity of boards, commissions and committees.
Yeah.
Really difficult for us to do that.
Yeah.
You know, but it's, but it's in our initiatives, so we, we mark it as a no every time, so.
Your, your part of it is, your part of it is getting it on the calendar and getting a facilitator, right? That's the town administration part of it, and it will happen without that, so that's why it needs to be on there. My opinion.
That we call them.
So if we're gonna keep going, municipal preference at Wiggles and Gooseberry, believe we have.
Mm hmm, yep.
One could probably come off.
Yeah, those are all.
All.
Yeah.
At least the locals on, underway with pilot.
It is.
But we may want to, well, I want to keep it on to evaluate it and see how it's going.
So when I look at explore incentives to encourage year round rentals, the good landlord ta- tax break is the other one that falls, so I think leased to locals fell into that, and now it's the good landlord. But that also falls under seasonal communities implementation, so I don't, I don't, I want to make note of it, but I don't think it has to be called out specifically.
I can put it in.
A lot of people want us to look at it, but I think it's already being done, I think it just falls under them.
About the trust on parcels.
The challenges on the numbers.
The RFP for trust on parcels, um, well, there's one out for the so-called bundle.
Sure.
All property.
That's done, basically, isn't it?
Well, the RFP I think is awarded, but now there's, needs to be coordination as to building.
So the, so the RFP is out, do we want anything with the trust on part, like follow up uh? Implementation or did? We got, complete the bundle part, it's something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. The other one that, we go through the ones.
Safe Harbor designation for the last two years and the next.
That stays before. That stays forever.
Ever, 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 so that's just a part of their operation, right?
Yeah, I, I just think that's what it is now.
But do we want to make it known that safe harbor is a priority?
Well, that should probably be the aspiration.
Okay, so maybe that gets moved to.
Goal or aspirational statement, yeah.
It's kind of needing the state. And all those A D Us.
It's in there as a goal, achievement and state hold and study.
Oh, okay.
Math.
Oh, yeah, so you don't need it as an initiative.
Yeah.
We've already.
Yeah.
We just have to maintain.
Yeah. Safe Harbor Strategic Plan. I don't really know about that.
That's, that's. Staying in safe harbor until we got to the shy number. But the problem is the shy number gets reset again every ten years, so we're always gonna need to be, have an eye on it, and I think when it's where it sits in the goals means it's just what we do.
Um.
And as we add more, as we have more year round subsidized housing and unsubsidized, that goes up.
Yeah.
So we have to, you have to have a buffer in there, yeah.
I mean, we can do a calculation, any year round deed restricted house adds one tenth of a year round deed restricted house.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Never mind what gets built in the private sector.
Yeah.
So, the, so safe harbor strategic plan, leave in, take out, consider it part of the goal.
Consider part of the goal.
Consider part of the goal.
Do you guys intend to review it? No, the board, the board, the safe harbor strategic plan, that's something that gets reviewed by, by the board.
Well, it's in the housing, regular quarterly housing update.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Trust should be working on it, and they should report out to the board at that, every couple of times a year meeting, and in the quarterly report that Christie does.
Yeah.
So it's sort of operationalized.
I mean, now that we have such a housing office, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. When we started with all these.
Exactly.
We didn't have those many in the place.
Yeah, I want to. I want to go back to the good one, like landlord tax for just a minute, like it seems like a good idea until you look at the impact on revenues.
Hmm.
And I want to make sure we're doing that appropriate analysis.
I listened, I, I have a podcast, Strong Towns podcast, that was sent to me that I listened to, and I was gonna forward you guys, and I haven't done it yet. But I will, but you, they had a very interesting conversation, they were talking about, uh, and they were down at Disney. Uh, and they were talking to a bunch of assessors at an assessors meeting, and they did a presentation. And at the beginning, they said, how many people here, of you assessors from all over the country, think the short term rentals are, should be taxed as homes? And how many thinks they should be taxed as business? And like forty percent was forty sixty, something like that, forty percent said, no, they're home, they're, they should be taxed as, forty percent said they should be taxed as businesses and sixty percent said homes. And then they went through a presentation and discussions with probably everybody, and the thing shifted completely. And the argument that they were making, they were talking about was that it, you know, it's not just short term rentals, it's seasonal homes were driving the prices of the entire market. They were driving the costs up for people in, that are not using it that way, they're increasing the prices and they are, you know, forcing people in those other neighborhoods to, you know, their houses are going up. And so what one of the assessors did was, he would said, well, you know, we know a house to a, you know, to a regular person is four hundred and it would be, you know, six, six hundred to these guys, so I just split the difference and I make them both five hundred. You know, so really what the reality is, is there's a commercial aspect. And when is that commercial aspect and the commercial incentives that are involved? It really skews the, you know, so it skews the assessments, it skews the ability for people to buy homes, it skews who's gonna buy. And I think that when we go into what you're talking about, I hope that we look at that aspect, because I think it's uh, you know, I, I think it's part of what we're, it's part of what we're struggling, why we're struggling. And so, you know, and so if you incentivize something, you get more of it. And I think that if we find a way to, you know, to give year round and workforce a break and not incentivize, you know, and charge the ones that are short term rental or, or rented a lot as event places, if we can find a way to charge them as commercial uses and actually charge them more, we'll get less of it. And that means we'll get, you know, we'll get more of the other and we won't be subsidizing one to the other. And I think that, and I'll send this to you because they explained it much better than I did, and they explained it really non-confrontationally and with a lot of, you know, talking to other people, it was pretty good, and so I think that that's a tough issue that we don't want to tackle. But I think we, when we start talking about this, we need to. Because that is, you know, if you don't get to the heart of why you have the issues you have, I don't think you can solve them. And so I think that we really need to get to the heart of that and be honest about it at some point. So anyway, there's my two cents. I, I don't know how to capture that into a, into this. Into a bullet, I don't know how to capture it, other than to say when we examine it, we should examine whether, you know, there should be differentiation.
Holistic examination.
Yeah, holistic to make sure that we're capturing that, because, yeah, so, anyway.
So which ones, Greg, have we not talked about on the list?
Uh.
The last?
I think the, the year round deed restriction pilot.
Done.
I'm pretty sure it's all done, and then we, the grants that should have been actually managed are already done, right? I think we.
Well, that's an ongoing program, it's an affordable, and it's an Affordable Housing Trust thing, right? It's, it's.
Well, it depends on whose land. Because we've given town land.
Yeah.
Right, but we've also done private grants to, on private land as well, like. So, I, I mean, I think it's just part of. I'm not following.
Well, like, we've given town land to Habitat, and.
Right, 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 right.
That's, that's what I'm thinking this is.
Oh, oh, not.
But doesn't mean. Yeah, maybe we need to be clear on what we're talking about.
But if it's already done, then it's done, if it's already operationalized and what Christie's looking at all the time, we don't need it on there anymore. Like, don't forget, this was put together so it could direct the housing office on what the board would like to see happen. If it's happening, then we don't have to.
And no matter what, we have to approve it. It's good about.
It's gonna come to you anyway.
Yeah, I, I just generally, um, we, we gotta be, I, I think we need to be a little careful about giving town land to other entities at this point, because we don't have very much of it for ourselves, to use for our purposes. I sort of thought that's what the land trust is gonna be starting to look at for these social groups and the town, um, all very much of a collaboration, but I guess I'm not completely sure what we mean by grants. So totally specific.
If we take it off the list, it's not a priority granting town land.
Yes, and they can, it doesn't mean they still can't come and ask.
But we have Christie's office.
Right.
That we do.
So are we taking it off?
Take it off, I think it's done, yeah.
No, and I agree, I think we should be prior, town should be prioritizing town land, town employees first. We need to take, really take care of that.
So what's left, right?
Well, I wanted to go up to the aspirational team, but the last sentence, how was it intended to well constructed, energy efficient, integrated, the character out? Is that a Christie's realm, I think?
It's pretty much building code.
It's building code, it's required, there's no way around it.
Well, the other thing about that particular statement is the energy efficient um, word, because we know that the H C C has trouble sometimes approving energy efficient features on a home, it doesn't have to be an affordable home.
Right.
Any home.
So is that an initiative?
Hmm.
To encourage the approval of.
May, maybe so, but not. Or maybe not under housing.
Right, under housing, yeah, probably under.
Environmental.
Environmental, yeah.
Yeah. I'd love that.
So are we taking that sentence?
I think we take it off.
Yeah.
That last sentence, I just thought really.
Yeah, but we're gonna keep it, we're gonna put it someplace else, we're gonna put.
Are you taking the whole sentence or just the energy efficiency part?
No, the whole sentence.
The whole sentence, because either building code or.
The H C C.
The H C C or stretch code.
And that goes to environmental or goes to town efficient operations?
I think, I think the energy efficiency will go to um environmental.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Michelle.
Yeah.
I just kind of want a brief macro statement of, of on housing in general. The nature of affordable attainable is changing so rapidly and because there's no more land and because of prices and all the stuff we were talking about in the beginning. The seasonal communities designation for Bohem's Act has, has changed the calculus all this a little bit. And I think that in the next couple of years, somewhat obviously, that, that some of this stuff may change because of the override and whether there's a transfer fee or not and what lands available and repurposes existing stock. Because the, the big parcels like Richmond or whatever are gone. That there's just no more, there's not gonna be, oh, there's gonna be a hundred units over, but whether people want that or not, probably not. But the, the nature of this is all gonna change, and especially once we hit the shy number. Um, which is not solving the problem, it's just solving the ten percent. That's gonna change the priority as well, so I think over the next couple of years that, I think that, see that as a real benefit of part two or three or four or five or whatever of getting the boards together on this is kind of like, where are we going with all this?
Yeah, and I think the last bullet point on, on goals sort of encompasses that, it's really about, um, in a way, it's shifting from a forty B housing strategy to a more um broader market for year round housing. Um, and it's in there already, but it's, it's, you know, we've been saying for years, you know, we get the shy list, we can control. Uh, and we've invested the lion's share of our available dollars toward that childless goal because it, because of the, the, the community's priority to stay in safe harbor. Um, and, you know, once we're there and we're keeping an eye on it on a regular basis, then we do have more opportunities to, we're, we're already starting to plan for that, and that's what's, what's important, planning investment beyond forty B strategy.
Anything else on housing?
Should we have a goal uh to examine ways to, you know, to increase it without having to subsidize it? Should we find way, you know, should we do it through zoning, should we do it through changing use of the second dwelling, the tertiary is already restricted, but maybe can't be depending how all this is considered, but uh, i- is there, you know, should we, how do, I'm trying to say, how do we look at ways to incentivize housing spread around the island without us having to subsidize it?
How about this phrase? Explore non-financial incentives for year round housing.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
But that would be it.
As a goal.
Initiative.
Initiative.
Yeah, like fifteen years ago, we were, we were like a couple votes away from second dwellings being year round, there's some, there's some version. And it just didn't come back the next year, but I think there's things like that, that's, you know, and the state is now making us have a primary A D U, and we already have a, a, a secondary home and a tertiary, and, you know, we can name one of those. We don't seem to be want, willing to want to, but we can name one of those pretty certain. So we have to explore what, how, which one we should name and how we do it. Like, I think that's the, those things, if we put them on here, then maybe they'll happen this year.
Yeah, and I think it intersects with the goal of more joint board collaboration.
Yes.
The two things should be stated independently. The two things should be stated independently.
Yeah.
The, they, they, they.
The meeting and the.
And the, and the exploring.
Yeah, and the agenda for the meeting should be this page.
Yes.
Yeah, updates about this.
Yeah.
Can I add the one thing that we might upside that?
I was just gonna say that there are implications if we incentivize and lower tax dollars coming in.
True, which is why we need to evaluate, yes.
Yeah, just saying there's other implications.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, something that is probably gonna come up soon is. Um, and I don't, definitely don't wanna go down the rabbit hole on this and it may, I don't even know if we wanna get into it, but, um, year round rental. Inspections or regulations or something like that is probably going to resurface itself. And I don't know that that should be on here, and maybe that's a discussion for the group. But, um, if we're gonna go down that road or consider going down that road, we should evaluate and explore it. First, before somebody starts coming up like movements, but the Board of Health. With regulations that have not been fully vetted as to how we are going to implement them and what the implications are. So I'm just mentioning it because I think, um, I think it's, it's already started coming up in the short term rental discussion.
Do, do we wanna add it so that it's in there? I don't wanna put too much on your plate.
I know, well, I was half wondering about that to get ahead of it a, a little bit. Um, and it's certainly not gonna happen tomorrow. We're, we're gonna have to work it into our program and. It, very initially figure out what would it take to do this? And there's all kinds of things that need to be in place, that's what we know.
I mean, to me, it's about housing safety.
Yeah.
But it's another, I agree with Libby, yes.
The higher instructions.
It's more regulations, more people.
Yeah, so.
Libby's whole staff's gonna be inspectors someday.
But I'm probably exploring the, exploring the needs, exploring. Housing safety issues or something like super general.
Yeah, maybe something super general.
Yeah, and, and this, now we're in the weeds, but there, there is a way to say, you know, if you're living in your house, we shouldn't have to have someone inspecting it. But if you're renting it year round, if you're renting it for a month, if you're renting it for two weeks, maybe it's on a different category and it gets inspected. You know, and, and I, I'm not a big one. I don't want the safety, I want it to be safe. But the crowding and the other stuff, um, I grew up that way. You know, I grew up with no kitchen, living in an office and on a beach with no electricity, you know, we had, we had gas. And we only had a phone because my dad had, was, worked for the phone company and the, the, the world is different. But it's not that different. Five or six guys in a two bedroom at, at Richmond or a fan, two families in a two bedroom at Richmond. Is similar to what, you know, we did when I was a kid to stay here. And so I don't wanna be too. Tight on it. I don't wanna be too restrictive on it. I want it safe.
Yeah, so, so exploring it means we can say, do we change? The regulations around non-family members. You know, there are limits that make what's happening illegal. Do we need to legalize it? And monitor it as opposed to, you know, I, I.
I've unrelated, but if the host is huge.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm, this has been something on my mind. I don't wanna go into a heavy enforcement. Because we create an economic downstream effect. And, um, and I think that there are, I think you're right. There may be circumstances where there's. You know, higher density living that are just fine and others that are terrible, right? Both exist.
You can't say unrelated, that's illegal, because you can't discriminate, but you can say so many square feet per person. So that that's, yeah, legally we can do that.
So we know.
So what's the language that, the wording that you had? Explore and evaluate.
Housing safety issues.
There already is rules about people per square feet.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. You can enforce that one. You can enforce unrelated is what I've understood.
With going into the house and without permission of the owner. May- maybe just exploring about your housing safety measures.
Yeah, 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 I like that.
Okay, let's move to transportation.
Transportation, that's favorite.
Right. And again, take a look at the aspirational statement as well as the goals and then we'll go through the initiatives. And we'll have a conversation after we go through all the focus areas on, on capital too. And so we talked about the collision report. So I don't know if there's anything that matches.
Uh, not really.
Yeah.
No.
We need to have a conversation real quick, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, we gotta do it.
Encourage non-motorized cyclones.
Class one and two.
Healthy.
And I'm.
Those are defined.
Greg, will you walk us through the initiatives in terms of?
Should you wanna do that first? Did you want to just see any changes to the aspirational statement?
Questions or comments on the aspirational statements? Cause I think we get to the initiatives and.
That one actually seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, there's a tiny, I think typo in the very last line. In our vibrant old historic district and made year round, I need that, is that supposed to say makes?
Yeah.
And, yeah, maybe a pleasant experience and make.
Make year round.
Make your, make your own access experience, okay.
Yeah, make, that should be okay.
Yeah.
We were ahead of ourselves.
I know.
We solved it with that one word.
Oh, I, uh, it actually, it isn't grammatically, it would be which makes your access.
To women, they concern.
But I wanna know, do we need to keep this in? Because it's been here and we haven't really done anything about it.
This is about using technology. I mean, if you read the sentence, it's supposed to be.
Right. It's about a parking management system. It's about paid parking. Like, yeah, so are we going there or are we not?
Massive.
About the third goal.
Disagreement on that.
Yeah, which is why we need to hash it out.
What it looks like.
Brandy gloves.
How it's done.
So I guess before we decide whether we take it out or leave it in, we need to look at the goals, because the third goal is the downtown management, so. Um, that's been on for a couple of years. But anyway, before we get to that, I think the other two goals are pretty. At the, the middle one is kind of, I don't really know how we get to it. I don't know, it's Mike Burns.
We keep, we keep working on it.
Yeah, I mean, we're promoting a lot. And then R T A going free has really helped. Um, the bike paths are gonna be having, what, like four more miles of bike paths coming online then, so.
And we think the safe interaction with one another is.
Is it hot?
Gilveth.
Um.
No.
Goes into the e-bike regulations as a, as an initiative.
Yeah.
So, uh.
So, anything else on the goals?
I mean, do you wanna, I think the first bullet point is, is fine. I mean, we, we continue to work towards the, the bike paths and. Um, we have more, like we have Newtown Road and others coming on. I think we're constantly looking at those. I think it's a good thing. I don't really know how we get, if we wanna change the second bullet point. I mean, we are doing it, we do promote it, so Ranchia actively promotes it, we, like N R T A has been assisting. It's a positive, so maybe it stays on there.
It's gonna be a continuous.
That's our goal, yeah. Um, and then I guess what, what Brooke's bringing up, the third one is, do we wanna talk about downtown parking, or just parking management in general? Um, does that stay on there?
So does that third bullet still reflect a goal that the select board wants to continue?
Or is there a different goal that the board would like regarding transportation?
Well, I'll just say, in terms of any new parking management system, I wanna understand. The difference between enforcement and paid parking. The impact of enforcement. Regulations, more, more ticketing, more turnover. Um, versus. Doing a whole paid parking system. And. I'm not convinced that paid parking. Is a better path over. More ticketing. More ticketing certainly gets me to rent my car, so.
Well, and that ticketing has to go out. Yeah, that, that makes it a moment, because, yeah.
No, it, I, I am 100% convinced. Uh, I think that we need to do, and it doesn't have to be kiosks, it doesn't have to be, you know, parking meters is all technology now. That will allow it. Uh, I think that the, it's under more pressure than it's ever been. There's cars parking all day long at, you know, Lincoln Circle and, you know, West Chester Street and, you know. All the way out, you know, half a mile, three quarters of a mile from downtown. They aren't there at night, they aren't there early in the morning. They all come in during the day. And so if, if those, you know, it, it isn't enough to tell people to do the right thing, there has to be a little bit of a sting to it. And if they get the first hour or two in the core for free. And then they pay a buck and then two and then four and, you know, if they sit all day, then people will actually get on the bus, they'll do other things. You know, and, and, and the businesses, if we set the system up with a, uh, with a parking, uh. With a committee that's looking at this, that changes the amounts that we charge based on the demand, then the businesses will do even better. When people wanna come in for dinner, they'll drive in and there'll be an open space. So, you know, so there's, there's a whole, you know, I'm just giving the oversight of, I just think it's. We've, we pushed it off during COVID, you know, and, and we did, we voted for it to happen. It got pushed off during COVID, it hasn't come back. I think it, personally, I think it's really important, it should come back. You know, I think it drives a lot of the other issues. I think, I think allowing cars to park on sidewalks. Allowing, when we're working on a house, allowing people to ruin everything and park everywhere all around because they're workers. I think we've got some, you know, some really serious issues that, because we've been too lenient. And when we didn't, so we, at one point, we, back in the day, we wanted to pay parking and we were convinced, don't do it, we'll just ticket. So they ticketed really well for like, uh, two, a winter, a summer, two summers and a winter. And actually in the wintertime, you know, people just had to move out of the downtown and it was, it was great. There were parking spaces downtown. They had to go into the two hour space. And it was great. It worked for the businesses, it worked. But. What happened when we actually started doing that? They started parking down in the creeks. And they parked in the water, they, you know, because they were getting charged. And so people were adjusting their, you know, their. How they were doing it. So I believe that there's a way to do it and we should do it. So.
I, I don't buy that, that, that the paid parking is any more of a disincentive than ticketing. I, uh, my argument or my question is. I am yet to be convinced that a paid parking system, which is a whole level of infrastructure that has to be put in place. Will be more effective than tweaking the system we have, maybe extending. The seasonal, you know, maybe it's not, you know, September thirtieth, it's October thirtieth now, that, that the two hour limits are in place and we. And we're enforcing that longer. I don't. Yeah, so, so. I, I agree with you that there has to be more disincentive to park for long periods of time. But I'm not convinced a five buck paid parking charge is gonna be any more of a disincentive, incentive to move out of a parking space in town. Than a ticket.
I still worry that people are just gonna pay.
Well, there's certain people who are gonna pay it no matter what. There are certain people who have deep enough pockets, they're gonna pay whatever. It's the, it's, it's the people that will be impacted. I don't wanna pay tickets. Uh, it changes my behavior, right? Um. Uh, I am not convinced that paid parking is the answer.
We don't ticket in the rain right now.
Okay, but that's not, we don't need a whole paid parking system to fix.
No, I just, no, no, but I'm just saying, so, so on the busiest days of the whole summer, when it's pouring, pouring rain and everyone goes downtown. Uh, we don't, so.
Okay, so we're trying to solve the problem, but we're not, that's not our intent here today. Our intent here is to have you all decide. Whether or not you wanna have resources, be it time and attention in your strategic plan. On what the current goal is to evaluate the downtown parking management system, to evaluate.
Yeah.
Is that something that you all believe this evaluation, is that still a goal?
Evaluate it versus the ticketing system.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that, but we need, I, I think we need to keep it on and actually do it.
Well, we, I was gonna say, we actually have to do it.
Yeah, that's.
I mean.
Yeah.
I, I've, we've talked about this forever.
Yep.
So I hear keep that goal as it is. And then back to that aspirational statement, that last sentence in the aspirational statement. Then do you all wanna continue to keep that in? And perhaps you're gonna wanna add an initiative related to that goal.
Maybe take out the word technology.
Well, technology is license plate readers, which jewels ticketing. So as long as we're thinking about it more broadly than paid parking, I'm okay with it staying.
I was gonna say, it's almost like you presuppose that it's gonna be a park, the goal of presupposition is gonna be parking. Well, pay parking model, as opposed to evaluating whether paid parking is a good business model or. A deterrent or, you know.
Versus ti- versus ticket. Changing the rules we have on the books.
Back to, let me ask you this question. What are you trying to accomplish? What do you wanna accomplish? When it comes to parking?
That it's not impossible to find a parking space. In town.
And they're not parked on sidewalks all over the place. I mean, that's what drives me nuts. You can't walk down the streets, we sidewalks.
So it's about safety, it is about turnover, so that people have access?
It could also be about, it's also about raising money. If we actually did it. And, you know, and a, a percentage would do it on, says they'll park and pay whatever. But more, you know, maybe five or 10%, but most won't. But we'll still, I think the estimates, it would raise like two million a year. So we're talking, you know, and we could use that to fix the sidewalks and fix other things that are a problem, so.
It, it certainly could.
Yeah, that, I look at it from that perspective.
Problem are you trying to solve? And the problem I hear is. Turnover, access as well as safety. And so perhaps then your goal is around evaluating the options without. Presupposing what your conclusion is. Evaluating the options. So perhaps the goal needs to be a little bit broader and not just about. A downtown parking management system. System may apply to that.
If there's something else unpopular, we could expand how many taxis in this super room.
And that could be part of the, part of the strategy that you evaluate.
Which does bring in, I don't know.
And or more direct. Not thousand stop buses from a central parking location outside of town. Like a, a commuter bus so that you could park somewhere. And hop on a bus that's a direct ride to town without stops. Like an express, an express shuttle system.
So then let me ask, for your strategic plan. If your goal is to evaluate options for parking. What's the initiative that you would like to see staff work on in the coming year to two years? What does that look like?
Can I back up a second? Cause I was doing that stuff. Would the goal be to stimulate turnover? That, that's the goal, right? I missed that part, okay.
And reduce demand for downtown parking.
Yeah, reduce traffic, reduce demand. People get on buses, they'll ride the bikes.
So, so now we go into the initiative, okay. And this is gonna get done, I just.
Well, I'm, I'm not, the whole, I think, from my perspective, I've been at this. I was asking for this twenty years ago and we've done tons of studies and, you know, we've had a lot of this, it's been done. It's just we haven't, you know, haven't gone the last step. And so I, yeah, well, made the decision or, or. And or had the, you know, had the consensus building with the, you know. For a year or two or three to build the momentum for this. You know, we, we're stalled at the, you know, we're stalled at the, yeah, here's a great way to do it. This is the way, in my mind, we should do it, but we haven't gone.
Right.
You know, and then we just go, oh, no one wants it, oh, we'll stop again.
But it doesn't.
It doesn't go away, it just gets, like I tell my kids, it just gets worse. You ignore something, it gets worse. And it's gotten worse.
So what's the action? What would be helpful for this, for this body?
It would be develop recommendations to improve parking turnover and reduce parking demand downtown. Now, I wanna, that's how I would describe it. I do wanna know whether we really wanna add this now versus some of the other things we're asking. Is this prioritized over some other things that we haven't gotten to yet?
And you may not know that yet, cause. And you may not know that yet, cause we haven't gotten to all those other things.
Exactly.
You mean within transportation or?
I just wanna put it on a parking lot for a minute.
You put it at the bike.
Like, as, you know.
It's not an e-bike practice for.
I'm not, I'm not on it as a top priority yet.
Yeah.
Personally.
Okay, so many.
Yeah, there's more to go. So let's talk about.
Well, can we go down each initiative?
Yeah, let's talk about the initiatives.
I was looking for the initiatives just now and some of them, um, I'm, don't even really remember what they are, but there's still 25 funded roadway works. Like we should be a little more specific than that. I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't, I, when I looked at it, I'm like.
I would, I would cross that out in favor of something like.
We had paving, it was a paving thing and that, we talked about it last year. We wanted to make sure Drew had the money and the funds to go and get things done and that would obviously be completed. If not, there would be FY twenty six.
I mean, I, I would just take that off. And drug work, annual road work is something that happens anyway. Yeah. Surfside 25 project.
I would say, I would say completed, cause hopefully this time next year, we'll be putting down the bike path. So we're taking it off. I would say, no, I should say, put complete surfside 25.
Oh, oh, I see.
Yeah.
Newtown Road, same thing, complete.
Completed, yeah.
Milestone and Pulpus, that wasn't even ours.
It's completed.
But, and, and it's completed.
The rotary is not completed.
The road.
Milestone and Pulpus. I'm not, I don't really know what Sparks that new project is. That's the bike path. Okay. So we should say what it is. Bike path.
Sparks.
Multi-use path.
Sure, use path, yeah.
Yep, and we.
And what started.
Underway, right?
Is it underway?
No.
No.
Not at all.
We don't need funding or anything for it, yeah.
This is pretty much Drew's presentation to.
Yeah, right. Actually, I think it might be on the, um, collision reports.
Which one? Sparks?
Sparks, no. Oh, no. I'm like, that was something else.
The money for that is really old money. It's not very much money.
Well, it's also, I think it's just design. I don't think we have a full amount for construction. Um, maybe just leave it Sparks add multi-use path project.
Yep.
Tom Nevers.
That's the bike.
Multi-use bike path project, complete.
Yep.
Well, when it roads, same thing, bike, multi-use path. That, that's.
Is that only a section?
Yeah, we haven't, we don't have that.
We're not even anywhere close to design. Well, we're starting design. There's a lot of wetland issues, a lot of permitting issues, a lot of right of way acquisitions. But if we could.
Start, we should say start while.
We could say complete design or something like that.
Okay, I mean, yeah, sure.
I mean, it's up to you guys. I don't wanna say.
Yeah, are we funded for design?
Uh, something.
We have some federal funds.
That always.
And some local.
I mean, that's. I don't think they go the entire road.
I think it's design and I think they had some takings that they had to do.
Oh, yeah.
So they went.
So it's really continued.
Continue.
Designed for.
Continue design for.
It's payments and negotiating.
It does, that's why it's.
And Williams Street project on streets. That sounds weird. Is that, do we mean the, um?
The one-way, I think.
The piece of sidewalk connection?
Yeah.
Oh, that was the next one that is.
Yeah.
Oh.
The sidewalk, the Williams Street sidewalk, and also that whole thing about reconfiguring Pleasant all the way down to Stop and Shop and Parking, right? The angled parking by the old front.
I don't think, I don't think that's what this.
I think that's.
Yeah, that's been on our.
Yeah.
What, that's happening, is that?
As I said, that's happening.
What, it was Andrew's.
It was in.
Angled parking?
Yes.
Yeah, like we approved a, we selected a design plan for that. I don't know where it is in terms of.
Okay, well, we'll have to say complete.
I mean, or, or do we, or do we push it? Like when we're prioritizing, is it something that we say it can wait?
Well, I'm gonna say this about that. Um, the section of Pleasant Street from Five Corners to Williams-ish is the most critical. It is also the most complex. And no one can agree on what side of the street it should be on. There are a lot of, um, interferences in the right of way that are things like poles and poles take eight hundred years to get moved. There are fences, there are driveways, there are lots of things that have to be moved on either side of the street. So, but that is an important section because it's not safe.
And we had the one-way trial and said, like, take it out now.
The one-way trial, I think it was in the, the desire to have some kind of pedestrian pathway there was increased.
So that section to me, Williams and Pleasant, from that intersection over to Sp- Williams to Sparks and Pleasant to Five Corners, like that to me is the priority because that's the least states. And then the other thing that I think we can do along that order is just reclaim the sidewalk um, across from the Boys and Girls Club. It exists. It's just overgrown and it's got hedges.
Do you mean on the Boys Club side of this?
No, the other side.
Yeah.
Just clean it up.
Yeah, there's a cleanup. There's, but also the sidewalk itself is deteriorated and in bad condition. It's part brick, it's part dirt, it's part, I don't know what.
The same with William. It's sort of like the same thing we'd be doing on William Street is really cleaning up and, and, and reclaiming a safe sidewalk as an interim measure. And then push off the, from there all the way down to the small rotary till later, because to me that doesn't feel critical.
Right, I agree. Well, I'm not gonna ask you that.
I mean, that, that needs to be part of whatever redevelopment.
The whole area. I was just gonna say that it's a whole area project. I don't know how we wanna title it, but.
But there are safe sidewalks along there now.
Those, it is the worst.
Maybe there should be something like complete design for Pleasant and Williams section or some, something like that, identify that section on Williams and on Pleasant.
Yep.
Um, and like prepare it for seeking construction money or something like that.
Yeah.
That's the gist.
Yeah. What's Pleasant Street?
I know the corner.
I think that might mean, I don't know what that means.
No, I thought it meant exactly what Brooke was talking about, the, the angled parking of, uh, the Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, really? That's down here.
Yeah.
Sorry, if we don't really know what it is.
Yes.
Yeah, I know that. I know you're pointing up that way.
I say this as non-voting member of the select board. But if you all don't know what it is.
Get it off.
It's a problem.
Get it done. Bye-bye.
It's probably not your priority.
Remaining milestone improvement to me is the the rotary.
Well, there's the rotary and there's the road itself. Particularly from Nobody or Farm Road out to, well, basically all the rest of it, but very specifically out to New South, because it's not wide enough.
I think it's coordinate milestone projects improvements with the state.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Cause it's their projects.
Yeah, and milestone.
And a lot of that is.
In the, um, in the initiatives, it says rotary, nobody or farm, like, yeah. Well, that's a good point. I did, Drew did put in better clarifications.
Yeah, it was kind of the both.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did the sidewalk, we did, right?
Yeah, I don't, and that's like, what does that even mean?
It was the, it was what, what Victor's been working on, all the different sidewalks. It's, it's done. I mean, it's in progress.
So take it off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Encourage cycling and walking, like.
That's like the bullet point.
Don't we do that anyway?
Of the goals.
That goes in the healthy, healthy human category.
Does, yeah.
It goes, it goes under alternative modes, encouraging alternative.
Yeah, it was a second goal, but I mean, do we keep that on? It's an ongoing thing. It's what it's.
I don't think it's an initiative. You know, this is, this is just a little bit of how you're doing business. You're always gonna.
We always, we all, yeah.
Is, is, is an initiative, e-bike safety?
Let's finish these first and then why we.
Yeah, we're at that. Parking management system.
So that's the one that we talked about, changing the language. Correct? To evaluate, we have not prioritized it yet, but evaluate options.
Yep. So that one's this one.
Yeah. To improve parking turnover and reduce the amount of demand.
Um, bike rack inventory was done by Drew this year.
They're free on our team.
Right. Is that an ongoing?
We should say continue.
Continued, like.
Well, we continue.
Yeah, we don't really have anything to do with it. Um, and if it, if the state says, okay, we can't do this anymore. Then we wouldn't have a lot of money to pay.
Unless, unless we've got our paid parking in place. Fully funded, they get paid for it. It's fully funded. Or if the parking tickets. Yeah, that's fine circle.
So I would say the same with your disincentivized transport by personal vehicle.
Which was.
That's part of your goals, not really an initiative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it said roll out a campaign, you know, by July first. That's something. Uh, working with still emerging, uh, road path. I want to, that, that all came up from the article last year from, um, I forget the gentleman's name, about putting signs, taking down the signs at the bike paths and everything.
So, so that's being done, right? And then, and then adding signage based on the AG, cause we passed that at town meeting.
It's not approved by the AG yet, but once it is, um, we're gonna have to add more signs, yes.
So do we keep it in as an actual initiative now? Move it up? Cause this was because it was on a warrant from a year ago.
Yeah, we probably wanna make it an initiative.
Could, yeah, install.
Although.
Once we have approval.
Yeah, yeah, but although I kinda feel like we should be doing that anyway. Yeah, so take it off.
Yeah. It's kind of underway, just waiting for the AG, right?
Well, we also, I think part of the reason it was there is that we, as a board, supported something that was taking a number of years and wasn't going very quickly.
You're right. So you're, you're encouraging it.
We're encouraging it and the idea that, oh, we're gonna add more signs on the bike paths. People that are crossing the bike path from a, you know, from a road, if it's a, from a road or from a driveway, crossing a traveled way, they are required by law to stop. They don't.
Yeah.
The bikers are not required to stop it. They are on the traveled way. They are not required to stop at every driveway. They are not required to stop at minor roads. They should be required to stop at the major roads. And, and by putting four signs up, you, we have made it unclear who's responsible. And you go other states and other places in Mass, they aren't signed the way we are. So, you know, so that's, so we wanna make sure that it's signed in a way that is clear and it's gonna make it safer. It's dangerous right now.
Well, our rule is also different from theirs.
Was that?
Our rule is different from other towns. We have, we have a rule that allows the bikes to go across these things that you just mentioned. Other towns have stop signs there, cause they don't have a local bylaw that says bikes have the right of way basically.
Yeah.
So.
So it's just.
There is some.
But it doesn't even, it's even a bylaw. It's, it's when we, when you take your test, you're crossing a traveled way, you're required to stop. The bike path is the traveled way. It's legally.
It does depend on the, if there's stop sign or not though.
Yes, but, and, and what BPAC has been trying to say is, you know, major things like, you know, Dionis Road and, you know, crossing milestone, et cetera, the bike should have to stop. And all the others, they shouldn't. And it makes a lot of sense. And we should ticket the bikers when they don't, at the, at the eight or 10 that they have to stop on, but we should be, you know, pulling people up that are pulling out of the driveways and not looking.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep us moving.
No, but I, so I'm, so I'm arguing to keep it on in some manner if we haven't, if it hasn't been accomplished.
Yeah.
To implement, is it to implement, once you get approval, implement what comes from the AG in terms of signage?
But it's, it's more than that. It's, it's, it's a multi-use pass safety.
And education.
That education is.
People don't know these.
Well, exactly what Matt's saying.
Yeah, it's, it's, let's clean it up in terms of what the rules are and then let's communicate about it. I think it's the combination.
Signs.
As a biker, you get yelled at by cars, people driving. If you have a bike, a sign on the bike path that someone has put and you go through it, you get yelled at. You know, and it's like, wait a minute, what are you talking about? So it's, it's really. Yeah.
You have a language to add.
I have something I'll write down. Yeah, we'll figure it out. We have to circulate it around.
So the last two then are about park.
They are. It's, um, we're working with NED. But did we ever do anything with the?
Well, we have in the past and they've said, no, thank you. We can ask again, I guess.
My understanding is there is gonna be a tow company and they've talked to NED about starting to tow in that lot. I don't know whether there's anything going on with that.
But well, what I think we wanted to do was be able to, um, um, take it in. And they, they said, no, no, thanks.
So does this rise to the level of an initiative then? Take.
Out of our control.
Yeah, we don't own the law.
So take that one off. And then does this last one?
Oh, boy.
Is that part of your evaluating your?
It will be part of the evaluate and develop, correct, stimulate, yeah.
Then we have been expanding now.
Anything else on transportation? So let's take a break. Food is here, so bring some food back. We'll have kind of a working lunch and just by way of kind of previewing, we still have two more areas to go through. And then we need to talk about the collision report. So I know that's probably not the most appetizing thing to review, um, but I, as soon as you grab your lunch, maybe take a look at that list, because one of the questions that we're gonna ask is, um, are there things on that list right now, back to your whole conversation this morning about, where did it go? Being realistic and setting expectations. That's on that collision report right now that you think should not be, because I, I'm gonna ask you to do some prioritization. But are there things there that, given what you know to be true today, that realistically you just need to put off officially? So very appetizing, I know. Indigestion, it's why we all get paid the big bucks.
Right, oh. Make sure, line my, my.
All right.
Oh, yeah. I should send that.
Do I need to mute?
Oh, yeah, if you know how to do all day of you.
Scary. Move the, again.
Move the, again.
You know, my camera is okay. Well, now you are.
So the next area is environmental leadership. Same drill.
That aspirational statement is probably one of our better ones, like it's pretty straightforward.
Do we really need much about the solid waste now?
You know, I mean for the goals. Yeah, no, the goals, I don't. I mean, that was kind of such a big deal years ago, right? Looking at the SWA and.
Yeah, but I mean, Brooke was very.
But I do think it is an ongoing, how we manage solid waste will be a forever thing. I mean, obviously, we've gotten through the initiative where, you know, on the cost of being finalized with the transition. Um, and with waste options, but I also do think monitor, you know, making sure that we're.
Intuiting the best technologies.
Yeah, and we're not going to have an open landfill forever. And so I think it's um.
I like the way it's written. I think it's.
Yeah.
And it is an ongoing struggle and it's being on an island is amplified, so.
Yeah, and if we, you know, if we can find a way to process it with technology.
And if anything, it helps emphasize that to the community, solid waste is such a challenge on an island. I mean, water quality is what we live and die by, right?
Yeah, and the coastal resilience, yeah.
And they're.
And then coastal resiliency is already here. In the goal.
Right, exactly. Yeah. And so that's a little move the other one. Well, that we're shutting down the health and environment, putting CRP one in there.
Yeah.
You know, say lots of moves. So when we get down, they want to make sure energy efficiencies are there that we move from housing, so.
So the statement and the goals seem to be okay.
I think so.
Mr. Boyd.
So how about?
All right, definitely. To a goal, uh, any efficiency will be, should it be a goal or an initiative?
I think it's a goal incorporate energy, uh. I think it's about incorporating energy efficiency standards or alternative energy or something in all town.
Yeah, like just energy.
Uh, public and private.
Public and private.
Where you had it in housing, it was in the statement.
It was actually an aspirational, yeah.
So I I would think it makes sense that either as a goal or something you went up to that statement as opposed to a specific.
I mean, it could be both, actually. It could be a goal. And then we can add.
Break both into.
Prioritize energy efficiency.
You know, in the aspirational, same with me.
So what are we trying to achieve? Is it? Is it?
Avoiding seven third.
That basically is that, I mean, it could be a goal is to avoid a third cable.
I think we're avoiding the fourth cable.
At this point, yeah.
We've grown so much and they're out here trying everything they can to 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 slow the peak that afternoon demand.
Yeah.
But.
It's happening.
So. The goal is to manage energy use. Or. Strive to.
I like the best energy practices around energy efficiency and alternative energy.
Implement.
Yeah.
Practices.
That's a goal.
Is it? Is it something like support, uh? You know, because some, I don't, I'm not, I'm, I'm, it's gonna come out wrong, but support. National grid or small scale solar, or are we saying something like that?
So that's more of an initiative.
That should be an initiative, yeah. And I think it probably is a good one.
I'm just trying to think of how to, like, how to be more specific, because if we say, Jew is, we care. We want energy efficiency. People are arguing about that.
What does that mean? Right. More wind driven.
Strive to reduce demand on the uh, national grid ener- energy infrastructure.
They go.
Been your aspirational statement too. You recognize the challenges associated with increasing energy demand.
Right.
Right.
So it makes sense then to.
To have it as a goal and then a couple of initiatives.
Your goal is to reduce the demand.
Yeah, to manage or to uh. Minimize growth and or reduce demand or reduce demand.
You slow, slow the increase. I know.
For traditional ener- for a traditional energy.
Electric. And there is an employee who's basically full job is.
Yeah.
He's doing.
Yes. Okay, so then how about the initiatives?
So we already did the response. That's all done. That whole, the whole solid waste agreement process is completed and.
I think that, wasn't that the R and Qs for alternative technologies?
Oh, oh, I thought it was for the solid waste agreement.
I I don't think we need to have it in there now. It's not a today thing, like, in terms of.
Yeah.
There's no alternative technologies yet that we're aware of. I mean, maybe initiative is to monitor. Um, emerging waste management technologies.
But we now have a full-time solid waste manager, which we didn't before. So and that's what his job is. Good job, yeah. So the sandboard head contract for PFAS, that's. They've already done, they're underway and they've already issued their first report, so I think that's done. Unless there's something else the board wants and continuing, like they're looking at the groundwater at the landfill for PFAS contamination. And I don't know if the board wants anything to do with that, you know, I think we're good.
Break them though.
When you talk about PFAS real quick, one thing that came up the other day was interesting. Is you know how what we, all of a sudden, these weird PFAS out in the middle of nowhere and you say, how did that happen?
Yeah.
And uh, and my buddy told me how often he's having his house, his land sprayed for ticks and stuff. So I looked at, I said, I looked it up and I looked up, is there a problem with this stuff? And there actually is. There's a lot of PFAS in some of the. You know, it's not the ingredient that keeps the ticks away, but they put it in. Permeation is the green, but they put in this other stuff to help it spray better and everything else.
And probably to stick into the soil.
And the containers that it's in. And so, and so we had, for years, we were doing uh spraying out in some of the low-lying areas. And so some of these, uh, some of the areas that we have getting weird spikes might be from that.
Mosquito.
And mosquitoes, that's what it was. It was. So I went to the, you know, I went to the staff about that and said, geez, have we ever thought about this? And they were looking it up. But I think that there's, so anyway, and it's there for us. You put it down, it doesn't go.
Intended consequences.
So do we want to evaluate uh the, the presence of PFAS in town?
Well, we have a full-time coordinator, you know, the only one who has it, and that's what he does, you know, got you this.
Somewhere.
What's that?
Kind of on here somewhere.
It is. Um, you see, uh, food waste project, that's just being developed. I don't know if you want to keep it on there to make sure we don't lose sight of that. It's. You know. Up to you guys. I think it's a good initiative. It's just not done yet.
Continue.
Continue.
Is Chris heading that up, right?
Yeah, um, with, yeah, of course, he's a low move right now, so it's just. Well, I should. Well, the harbor and groundwater sites are underway. I mean, is that, that's kind of operationalized and Jeff Carlson's shop.
What's, what's different about this? So you're saying, take it off?
Take it off, yeah. Um, it's been, was prioritized and it's in, he's doing that. They have some like ten more points that they, they tested, you know, for. Um, the second Japon that I would say keep on is part of the CRP and they're working on it, so if they continue with the. Um, Jeff's added additional water quality testing sites for last year, so unless you want, unless you want additional testing sites, I mean. Cause you're going, but um.
I would take it.
I take it off.
Yeah, I don't want to micromanage.
So, yep.
Right.
The Sackage Pond opening, they, they're going, I think, as Jeff was watching effectively earlier. Um, they are, they got their permits or they have their permit to open, but they haven't. Opened, right? I forget, something like that. The twenty, today, if you're looking at it, so completed.
Open as we speak.
Uh, it's a beautiful day for it, too. I think they got it. First harmful algae boom, so I don't know if we did that.
It's on.
That's completed.
It says, oh, exactly. Okay, I mean, okay.
To take that off.
I mean, unless there's something that's really important for the board for algae or the ponds and all.
Is there continued discussion on making land cover?
Well, that's the, that's the permit he's been going for. Is there an opening? For opening? Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Let's just.
Are, do we want to maintain a priority of? Um. They, like, continue to investigate how to address other ones because they're ongoing. Priority and in the public's eye, like, it's. To me, one of sort of the ugliest things that happens in terms of our environment, um, the most visible.
Jeff just texted, he's like, we're opening it right now as we talk. So yay.
Well, and to your point, is that something that's already being done? Is that something that staff is? Continuing to do in terms of monitoring?
Oh, yeah.
I would say the one, the one piece that's, that's missing is fertilizer. And, and that's. You know, at the state level, because they've limited our ability to regulate fertilizers at a state level, and so. Um, uh, you know, do we want to resurface fertilizer? I mean, Jeff's already doing it, right, to the report, sort of reviving. The education for the people who are applying at better training. So I don't know, we need to call it out.
Has that been, that hasn't been operating for a couple of years, right?
It kind of fell by the wayside for a while, and I think it was maybe one of the things that got lost in COVID. Um, and I know the Land and Water Council has been working. Trying to revive it. Um, do we want to put our? Back into it?
I think if he's already doing it, we could, I think we could put it as initiative. Revive, you know, it's, it's the most impactful thing we can do legally.
Because it's one they continue to. Support the work of the natural resources.
But this is a step further. This is sort of saying that we think that this is a, you know, by putting it on here. As a separate thing, we're saying we think this is something that is important. Yeah, then fine.
I mean, my gut is, like, I'd love a campaign about you don't need a golf club on your, on your front lawn, right? So I think maybe it's like continue to monitor the impact of fertilizer, residential fertilizer use on. Our water quality or something like that.
Yeah, it's fertilizer, it's septic systems, it's a lot of things, but.
And drug.
PFAS.
Compared to.
No, that's a big deal. It is.
So is it broader about water quality, not just about fertilizer, or do you want to be specific about fertilizer?
I, I, I want to be specific about fertilizer because it's something that, that was done and then went follow, and I think we, it's helpful to revive.
Yeah, there was an awful lot of effort put into it originally. The people, time and boards, and it should not fall away. Is it called, is it revived fertilizer licensing or fertilizer classes? What, what is?
I think it's fertilizer management.
Management, revive.
Or, or uh. Uh, support.
So Jeff's saying right now, he's like, the fertilizer training is an active, ongoing program with an active capital request right now. They've also put in a request for an outreach and educating educator within NRD to. Constantly talk about fertilizer and other water quality issues, like above and beyond our comms office. And he said, I like Don's idea. I don't know what the idea was.
Continue to support.
Okay. He's just right over there watching, so you can have him come on over. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
All right, so the next ones are uh coastal resiliency, funds tracker and the filter. Funds tracker says it was completed.
The fund tracker is completed. They did that in-house and it's really the grant tracking as well as funding. Uh, the resiliency filter has not been completed. That's.
What is that?
So um, it is, you have the matrix of best practices and other things that come up with the, the pack. And everything else, and it's trying to figure out how do we put that down at every town project, whether it's a. Capital project, construction project, how do you make sure you have the energy efficiency, you have the, you're how many feet away from a coastal zone, you have.
GIS layer.
Oh, it's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
So it's applying the filter to town project?
The whole thing, yeah. And it's not there yet. It's bigger than. It seems.
Continue.
I would say developing, developing.
Resilience to filter.
Yeah, the filter kind of is just applying, and so about the implementation of it.
Yeah, okay.
Master and safe harbor planning updates?
Were you sure?
Yeah, we just did that one.
So take that one off.
I don't know, the master plan isn't done yet.
Well, the harbor.
Well, the harbor plan, right? That's the one that just went through, right? Master plan, I guess, is.
That's.
I think it's.
It's ongoing still, yeah.
Yeah, I think it might be wrong. It might have been two, two bullets combined.
Sounds like what is called the master, and this creates a mission.
And then an Anticadale Resort, USCG. Specifically.
They've been, I think it's been too busy to get to things like that ongoing discussion.
About, um. Community collaboration.
Stiffly?
It should be.
Yeah, I know.
What does that mean? What do we, what do we mean then?
That, I think that was, I think, to, to leverage grants and partnerships so that they could work together on things and. Like, just things that are ongoing, it's not.
There's other committee organizations.
People at private partnerships, I think.
Would this stay on or is this just about how you're doing? Yeah.
Doing it.
I mean, they try, yeah. I mean, it's what, it's what they do. I mean, they have great relationships with Great Harbor Yacht Club and like the Shellfish Association and, you know. It's just, I don't know, I think, I can't really recall. Why this went on by the board. I think maybe it was more about how can we leverage more funds that aren't tax dollars and how can we. Partner with other organizations, that's probably what.
I would say, once you start labeling, you're missing people, you're missing groups, so.
It was very, very specific, I know.
Community cooperation.
Is that really even a initiative or is that just how, that's a how they go about their.
I think there is a little bit of promoting being able to utilize some private fund.
Sure, yeah.
And that way, the harbor plan is completed but not approved by the state yet, just. And then it will come to that.
Was this about the, the uh? Oh, was Allen Resorts about the harbor, drainage in the harbor, the, in replacing the filters every year? Was it? Anything to do with that issue?
I'm, I'm asking them right now.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
About, it is pursue private, uh. Pursue other outside funding sources for projects.
There's been a discussion for the chapter ninety line stuff. Is around the downtown, you know.
How about super general, like? Uh, public. Pursue public and private partnerships for environmental and resiliency initiatives.
Yeah. Which is what he does. I don't know if it needs to be an initiative.
Goal.
Yes, I mean.
Yeah, maybe that's a goal. That's, that's part of the how you're working is to always do that for any of these specific things that you're doing.
Jeff said, it's exactly what we said. It was just to partner with these organizations, especially around coastal resiliency and everything, which is what they do. I mean, especially the Easy Street Project in Washington, we've been working with the partner, you know, or others.
It seems to make sense as a goal then, as part of all of these things where, where appropriate, or looking for other funding sources?
So reword this by making a goal.
To, to. To what Tom said about.
Pursue, pursue public and private partnerships for environmental and resiliency initiatives.
As a goal.
Yeah.
Get that, Jeff, you have another goal. Unless there's anything else that the board wants with environmental leadership.
I think I would like to see us uh. Put effort into figuring out the whole betterment situation. For, because it keeps coming up and it keeps being pushed aside. And how we're going to do it in areas, what's the, I, I just think it needs to have some focus.
Is that more of a government efficiency thing or is that in?
No, this is more a, you know, we talked about coastal resiliency and how we're gonna have people who are better, you know, are. Receiving the benefit, pay for some of it, but never, whenever we talk about it, we don't have any details. We don't know what it should be. We haven't put the time in to understand what it actually might be. And so I would like to have some staff time and hires people if we need to to help us figure it out.
That's again, I mean, is it an environmental team thing or the efficient government, like a finance team and town administration that looks at the. Impact of betterment? I, I.
I don't care, I don't care how it is, but it's somebody in charge to make sure it happens. So it, we've been talking about it for a few years.
So I think you think it's it.
You think it's there, okay.
I think. You think it's sufficient.
I think it's effective, efficient.
Thanks. So I agree with you, man. I think that probably the board likes that. That's something to look at when we bring.
But I want to, but I want to, I want to try to make a, put it. As specifically, so that the.
For environmental.
Yeah, for, well, somewhere here for the, so that it happens this year.
Right.
As we, too much.
What's the ask? Is it, is it that staff come back with? A recommendation?
Well, that we examine how, we, that we examine how betterments are going to be implemented on coastal resiliency projects so that we can answer that question because. On coastal resiliency projects so that we can answer that question because we get stuck, we get stuck when we're talking to. Homeowners and neighborhoods with, well, how it's gonna happen? I don't know. We're gonna look at it. So that, you know, and we've been stuck for a couple of years. So I'm saying, let's look at it. Whatever that means.
So is the public, private partnership thing more under not just for coastal. And environmental. Projects? Does it fall under efficient town operations more and then? This becomes an initiative under that?
Jeff clarified that this particular one was according on things like bulkhead elevations, flood, stormwater management, which is.
But are we doing it in anything outside of environmental leadership, public, private partnerships?
I would, I would put a pin in that one for right now because the answer is probably yes. That it is, there's probably other opportunities in other places, transportation, for example. It's probably, yeah, there's a lot of other funding sources that come from that. So. But I want to make sure that we, you have a goal somewhere and you can revise this if you need to around the. Public, private partnerships specifically for environmental and sustainability projects in this, in this focus area. But then I want to address whether or not where we put betterment or where you all put betterment. Let's table that question. But what is the, what is the asked? Just for clarity for staff, what is the ask? Is it about coming back, I think you said, with a plan for. What it means?
How are we, yeah, how are we gonna pay for this? How are we gonna, how are we gonna fund it? How are we gonna charge the? How are we gonna fairly charge the people who are benefiting and the public? And it's gonna, what is? How, you know, how are we gonna examine this and do this? It needs some. Forcepower on it.
Think it is to come up with a plan for instituting and utilizing benefits.
I mean, I know there's a few small examples of where it's been done, but. There is so much larger scale.
Then I think if we call it out, either here or in efficient town operations, we're signaling to the community that this is common.
I do think it belongs in efficient government, like, because I think the team that we put together for that would be a financial team is, you know, it's. Specifically for resiliency type things, but it could also be.
It's also been for road.
It could be roadway too, exactly.
Yeah, and it's got to, it should include, like, when it comes to resiliency, you say include people who are dealing with that as part of it.
Oh, yeah, they, they, yeah, but they would.
Yes.
So do you both have clarity on that then? We can move it wherever it needs to go in terms of the ask. So anything else on environmental leadership? Do we cover all of the areas that?
Do we need an energy efficiency? Initiative to support it?
Yeah, get the H D C to. Establish.
I, I don't think you have initiatives for every.
No, don't.
So, so I don't.
I was just asking, because it's new.
That's, you know, part of about our board meetings.
We have an energy person.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I'd kind of like to see. What, what Lauren sees in the next couple of years on where the energy market's going and third, whatever, and then maybe bring that in next year.
Okay. Efficient and effective town operations.
Will be, there's no seven area.
They're all titled enforcement.
All right, is that what you just finished on? Environment, so on to.
So anything different in the aspirational statement or the goals?
Uh, there's a type of. The town is committed to planning for resilient and sustainable community and maintaining an. It just doesn't seem like it reads right.
What should say and to maintaining and improving the infrastructure of assets?
Committed to planning and committed to.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Too planning, too maintaining, too improving.
Anything on, if you got, you got us the typos, it must be okay. Those are the easiest. Anything on the goals?
The central municipal.
It's, yeah, it's needed. It's also how are we piecing it together?
I think all the bullet points are there, but the last bullet point is a tough one.
Yeah, I have a thought on that one. And I know we're gonna have somebody eventually for, who's like sort of the committee coordinator. But I think it's really important moving forward when we get somebody and have bandwidth, et cetera. Obviously, there was that position and now that position is doing something else and all that. So not looking backwards, but looking forwards on it. To. Especially the regulatory boards and, and. To get people up and running with. Basic open meeting law stuff and. But, you know, being, being a chairperson and all that stuff. I, I think there's, there's some kind of inefficiencies that's no one's. Fault at, in the town. It's not like no one's doing their job, but I think it would greatly enhance. Some of the committees be able to function with sort of some, setting some ground rules, some rules of the road. Not specifically like when we had. Lauren Goldberg come and do. Kind of an overview of, of type stuff. Maybe it doesn't need to be that, but I, something like that, I think, is extremely helpful. For folks on committees.
I think sourcing some kind of outside. Public board chairmanship training. Could be useful.
So we are, our new committee coordinator starts on Monday.
Great.
On the seventh. And she's gonna need to get up to speed and this is, we're piling a lot onto that position. And. Right now, the very basic. Tasks of making sure, making sure that there's open meeting law compliance and minutes are filed in the appropriate time, sign the agenda to begin on faculty. Some consistency in, in all of that. And then I think we'll get to training and recruitment. There already is. Some training offered online for conflict of interest through the state, whenever the state offers it, we encourage everybody to take it. The, the kind of difficulty is, um, we don't want to be necessarily punitive. But there are committee members who don't sign the code of conduct, refuse to actually. And we don't really do anything about it. At the board level. Um, and I think we want to be careful because we want to encourage people to be on committees, not punish them for being on committees. But there are some. Requirements to being on a committee as well. And the training is one. Signing what we need you to sign is another. The chairmanship training is a very good idea. And there are some committees that. You need to learn about what they do, like the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health, and their state sponsored training for both of those in particular. And. I think committee members should more or less be required to take that training. And if they don't within a certain period of time, if they expect to be reappointed, maybe it's, you know, you don't do it. Your chances of getting reappointed might be less. So, something like that. But there's, you kind of have a responsibility when you go on to a regulatory board. Like those do, because those really impact. Town. Programs, projects, um, costs. There could be, we, a board could. One of those boards, I'm not picking on them, but any regulatory board could take an action that now we're in a lawsuit. And had they maybe not done that or sought legal advice in advance. We wouldn't be spending thousands of dollars on a lawsuit. And I'm, I'm kind of making that up now a little bit, but.
Not really, because we took some positions. I don't think we're very smart.
Related question, does every single one of these members have a town email address now?
No.
Yeah.
But that's a, that's another issue with I T though, the management of. How many committee members, people do we have? Well over fifty.
Yeah, well.
They change and they won't do their cybersecurity training and they say it's too hard to check the town email. It, it, we, I mean, it is a lot. And the FOI, yeah. There, there's a lot of implications to being on a committee nowadays. And.
We have a lot.
We have a lot of people on committees and that's a lot of town email addresses. So the town email addresses right now are pretty much limited to. Those very, very active groups that meet a lot. But it is, it is not comprehensive.
Will be Masher a question? Not signing the code of conduct is a new one. Is that people who? Well, I suppose there's probably a basket of reasons why, but I almost feel like on our committee appointment form, that should be a requirement. And you're not gonna adhere to. Again, you don't want to make it punitive. We want people to serve, but that, like, doing those basic trainings are.
Yeah, I used to ask Erica, you know, for that info and she will get it if we ask her, but it was not necessarily supported. The people would still get appointed anyway because they represented people on the board like their views. And so, so it was. It's true. Yes, you should be doing that. But then, you know, and the other part about it is if, is in order to do that, we have to track it or someone has. To track it.
No, all we need to do is if you're applying for reappointment, you have to check the box. Did you complete your cyber, your training? Did you not? And. And maybe we can't verify it, right? But if someone is signs on the application form. That they have done the appropriate required trainings as a sitting, someone asking for reappointment. Then I can look at it and say, this person has refused to, has not signed a code of conduct.
We might not know and the code of conduct will know if they did it or not. And the I T training, training will know if they did it or not. You know, so we can have them sign it and then we can know whether they lie or not.
So is this something that the new person starting on Monday? Will be involved in?
Yes, um, it's gonna take some time for her to get up to speed on all this, but.
It's not fixed by Tuesday.
But that's the general idea.
So what I heard in that, and maybe that's part of this initiative that you have right now about screen lining, onboarding and orientation. Was that?
It was for committees.
So perhaps that needs to be expanded to talk about. You were talking about even training. It's not just, it's not, you're not trying to just streamline. Onboarding and orientation. You're trying to ensure actually a more robust. Onboarding and training process that includes some perhaps minimum requirements.
Yeah, I guess my addition, my thought kind of now that we're talking about this is. Maybe it doesn't need to be all forty seven committees or whatever we have, but. But the regulatory boards are the top five or six with the most jurisdiction, like they should. They should be signing the code of conduct. They should be doing conflict justice training. They should be doing all that stuff. And. And.
Especially your regulations can be wanted.
Yes, yeah.
So can you massage that initiative?
Yeah, that was good. And also kind of think of it, the streamlining onboarding and orientation was also about town staff, but H R's. Have a whole new training and onboarding program, so.
So maybe make that one specific to committees.
Uh, so still gonna be working towards a new T P W facility?
I mean, clearly, but it's all about funding.
So.
I definitely support the.
It's, I mean, it's all town facilities to me.
Yeah.
But if we have to pick one, do you pick? What do you pick? We're gonna get to that.
We're jumping out.
Yes. Yeah, our island was a bullet point, right? Um, recruitment intention program that. It's ongoing now.
It's ongoing.
It's pretty much in H R and we're doing another one this year, so. The evaluation tool you've created, the Rick has.
With the evaluatory total compensation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. Well, class and comp, so recruitment intention program is through SEAL. Yet this other one is through vendor called Lytics, which allows us to. Compensation across. Massachusetts municipalities, we expect to be super helpful coming in, upcoming collective.
Can I ask a question about recruitment and retention? Does that need to stay on or is, do you feel that's? Completed? And I go back to the, you know, what's changed and a lot of things that you all talked about was. Ensuring that you have the staff so that you have the capacity to take on things. And the challenges of the workforce today haven't necessarily gone away.
It covers a lot of things. It covers housing. It covers the compensation. We are redoing, refreshing the compensation framework this year. So actually, it is something that we will be working on. So I think it's probably worth keeping on there as long as we understand that. It's those specific things underneath, like.
Right.
The SEAL class and comp.
And coming up on collective bargaining, have we eliminated every master medical policy?
It's mostly people not, it's only people not in the union. There's very few left. I don't want to say less than ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is one of our major goals.
Uh, so I think there's probably a way to combine these.
So I would say it's, it's, it's. Continuing to monitor how the compensation includes, including housing. Because I think we really do want to add, how are we? Because that's, that's complicated compensation and relative compensation and perception of relative compensation. So.
I wouldn't highlight it here because it would be, it'll be grabbed by the union as a. See, look at you, sir, you're gonna do this. You didn't do it. I want to get paid more now. I just leave it, know that we're working on it.
That's why I think it falls under the umbrella of recruitment, recruitment and retention.
I think it's just refreshing the program, which is what we're doing, refreshing it this year. Uh, we did it on our island home.
Well, the survey. Is that, are we, when is it closing?
Thirty first.
Sidebar, I'm yeah, I'm home. Um, we are working on a little update for you sometime after the special. Which includes an update on the items that you all said we need to know more about. Da, 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 da. Before we make a decision, so. That's in the works.
Cyber.
I feel like that is operation.
Operation, so we actually hired a cyber security coordinator then. It's part of I T's department. And then we go to the D E R.
That probably should come out, although I think we more or less have operationalized quite a bit of it. So, given the.
So what, how, what does that do to the last bullet point of goals?
Increased diversity of municipal board. I think that's.
Just different, okay, just.
Maybe it's about. Increased recruitment. It's like, it's about, it's about broadening recruitment efforts for.
Participation in.
Increased participation in boards committees. Yeah, I like that.
Now, that's a good goal, Chris. What you were saying with the initiative, so we don't want to do that.
Uh, planning and select board meeting to align plans.
Well, you, you did need the planning board and the planning commission. Was that just about a year ago almost? But as the master plan. Develops. And as this plan gets updated, we probably need another meeting. Finish.
I think it should be an annual thing that we. We complete our strategic plan and then we have the joint meeting.
When we rule it out, we shouldn't invite them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday night. I like that. Meeting.
Yep.
The same night.
Yep. Not, not a separate, disparate, separate meeting. It's impossible to schedule.
So do you want to make that an annual thing?
Yeah. Yep.
Because the, the strategic plan isn't.
And I think it's beyond the planning board. I think it's inviting.
Yeah.
All boards and committees and invite everybody who's serving on a town committee to come on that night, like intentionally.
I would just say that if the planning board has questions about.
Yeah.
So is it appropriate to keep it on this list? So that it, it becomes. Again, kind of a signal to all of those other bodies, to all of your other committees. That they are. That they are expected to. Review and understand what's in the strategic plan each year, because that will help guide presumably the work that they're doing within their.
But maybe the initiative is establish in, uh, uh, establish an annual strategic plan review for all board and committee members. Out of a select board meeting. And then once that becomes a pattern, then it, we could take it off. But it's establishing that as a. And it's not, you know, and they, each board committee has to figure out if they're gonna have a call and when they need to post meeting.
If it's like a bullet point, it's already operationalized, which becomes out.
But the, I understand the communication strategy. Maybe now have. A full office that's working on.
Do we want a continued focus on? Communications, I mean. We've come a long way, but we also know we're not totally successful yet, right? Yes, we still get the.
Well, and I don't, we're never going to, because people just don't pay attention to things unless they know it's going to impact them tomorrow.
Okay.
I think we're on, so you tell you, we do. Miles more than.
Totally. In a variety of platforms.
Yeah, we'd be exploring, you know, sort of consensus building or public. You know, what we're, we're, we're missing a lot of times is the public hearings where we're actually asking the public for input and we're, you know, and we're. Then we're asking for, you know, sort of advice on how do we do it, et cetera. Do we? And when we've done it, it has been, I've talked about earlier, it was, you know, the sidewalks downtown was a great example of it worked really well. You know, people were given, you know, giving a ability to put the sidewalk a little bit on their property and. They were working with each other. So I, I just think, can we find a way to? You know, sort of put that into how we do things, Colin.
Sort of enhancing public engagement.
Uh, uh, yes.
Input into.
And it's, and it may not be here. It may be at the, you know, MPDC, it may be at the planning board in the planning stages. It might be somehow else, but somehow. We, we're, we're missing a big part of how people build consensus is, i- is by. Including the public and it takes a lot of time and effort along the way. So when they finally get to town meeting, it's supportive, but they finally do something and it's. Kind of like blah, everyone's like, oh yeah, we knew that was coming. And we end up, we're, we're chasing our tail. And then by the time we try to bring it, it's, we're late and we're like, oh my God, we gotta get this through and. Then they're all asking those same questions. So I, I would, anyway, I, I'd like to find a way to, you know, if we want effective town operations, how do we find a way to? Put that missing piece into the major things.
Is it to some extent, how do we identify and anticipate? Where the public is going to come out against, especially big projects that are years in the making, right? Can we? Figure out what the. And then I look at Island Home and all the outreach that got done and it still comes down to. Up, thumbs up, thumbs down at town meeting and at the ballot.
And survey to try and figure it out too. And it's, there's, you know, a lot of pushback on that and how it was, how it's done and.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm trying to build off what Matt said in terms of like. Getting public engagement earlier in planning processes.
Yeah, here, I'm here, it's.
Rather than when it's fully baked.
Consensus building, exactly. And town government involves a process collaborative decision-making where all stakeholders. Work to find a solution that addresses everyone's key interests and concerns. And, and finding mutual blah, 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 uh, community ownership when people involved in creating the solution. They're more likely to be invested in supporting the final decision. Conflict resolution is a whole bunch of aspects, but it's, I think it's what we're missing. And so we're bringing something and we're saying it's done. And then they vote, they're going, well, what about this? And what about this? And what about that? I would have done this. And then we, and then it goes back for more. And so I'm just sort of, how do we, how do we change how we do things so that we're including that along the way?
So I would just, just add to that, that if that is a direction that the select board is interested in. It is, and this is based on work with other communities. It's, it's an entirely different way of how you. Implement and engage in a process. And so it would require. Probably a lot more strategy and resources to do that, because you're absolutely right. It's, it starts from the very beginning. But based on what you all said, that's not necessarily how all projects happen today. And so it's, that would be a significant. Investment into resources and time to get. A different process, a different mode. You know, there are different communication strategies. There are different, uh, ways in which you do that to build. The consensus, just as you were, just as.
More work for you guys.
I mean, we've also talked about changing the form of government. Hasn't gone away.
I, this is a conundrum a little bit because we've done this. And it's been kind of unsuccessful. Let's take a look at short-term rentals. We had a work group that met for a year and a half with a facilitator. And was that successful? I think everybody could argue maybe not. And here, here we are with that situation. Like Dawn said, we spent a lot of time on the Island Home outage. We did videos, we did newsletters, we had informational meetings to which hardly anybody came. But. In that instance, that is a massive project and it needs. We didn't have a solid project manager who only was focused on that. And that's a whole other thing to manage. It was sort of like Rick and I, Bob Eisenstein, and we went back and forth and we had. A lot of different things going on all at the same time, but we're also doing. Five other things at the same time too. So. I don't know what the answer is to engage more people. But. There is a little bit of personal responsibility out there that people. Have to seek out things from time to time. A tiny little example, and a private citizen, a citizen. Came to the office the day the board was adopting the warrant. About, I don't know, ten thirty, you're meeting with it noon. And said, I want to add a citizen article to the warrant. After Katie and I had good laughs about that, um, he said, no, no, really, um, I don't, I. There's something on there that I, that I don't like, that I learned about. There's a zoning article. It's gonna affect my property. And we're like, hold on. No, there isn't. There's, there's, there's no zoning changes here. This is like short-term rentals only. Oh, well, at the planning board meeting, they were talking about changing my zoning and, okay. This was like a whole completely not understood. I heard a little bit and I made some assumptions. And, um. It's not, that, it's not accurate. So we're, we're just. There's a constant battle, battle's not the right word, this constant challenge. To get the public to understand what we're working on. A lot of people watch select board meetings evidently. Maybe to start with, if you think there's something that could benefit from some additional citizen input. Um, and like we just did with noise by law, perhaps. Hey, everybody, we're looking to get some public input on, on this thing, but, but where, how do we, do we, are we supposed to put out an ad in the paper for that? Are we supposed to? Put out flyers? I, I mean, do, should we drive around neighborhoods with bullhorn and tell people what's? Happening? Is there a sandwich board person? Like, there's just.
We generally don't know what's coming for town meeting in terms of citizen warrant articles.
Exactly. It's, it's, it's very challenging. I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. It's not.
It's an idea, but I, again. You, you're gonna track the people that are interested in that issue. You'll still get six people in the room. And you won't get six hundred until it gets closer to the end. That's just reality.
I think it, it sort of depends what the culture is. I think if the culture changes into one where, yes, this is our process and this is what we do. Then more people, and, and people have a chance of. Being involved in it. And I'm not saying to do it on every single thing, you know, don't, you know, and you know, if you do it on a bike path. You know who's gonna be impacted and you talk to those homeowners and like this, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that you pull everybody for everything. But on the bigger, bigger issues. We need to, you know, we need to do something different than we're doing. So that's, and how I came about this was reading about this and, okay, how do other people do this? How do other planning departments work? How do other, you know, how do they engage the citizens? How do they, you know, how do they build a process that? You know, this thing passes in the end and, and I sort of landed on this, you know, so it's.
But I think to Michelle's point, it, it's really about changing. To some extent, it is a culture, it's a culture change and it's a lot of work to move the ship of culture.
Don't change culture.
No, it's a, and it's also hiring change. It's having people there that are, you know, engaged in doing that task. I mean, it's. I'm, I'm not saying that we can do it with the existing workforce.
Yeah.
The way we're doing it. I'm saying we may have to hire somebody. Maybe someday we do it, but. Anyway, we'll see how, I, I let it go, but I, I think it's, uh. When we get to the collision, it'll, we come back up. It is a conundrum. I think, but if. If we, if half of this room were describing to the other half of the room. The new our island home project. You guys would ask intelligent questions and we would have told you that, well, we considered keeping it over here at East Creek. And the reasons we didn't is this, that, you know, these five and here's some more detail on these five. But it feels like we're communicating to a soundbite population who only react to tiny little things. That, you know, they're not, haven't engaged to, to understand the detail and I, I don't, I don't know how we. How we get busy industrious people to take the time to engage and.
That's a cultural thing of the whole country.
Yes, like go back to all those things that changed and even, even Matt, your comment earlier this morning about. Everything's become commoditized. But it is, it's instant, it's soundbite. And so. Creating that culture is about investment, that people are fully invested in their community and they want to. Stay engaged for the long term. And what I heard you all talk about is that's not how people think here anymore. Maybe they did at one point, but that's starting to shift a little bit. And that's. I think to Malcolm's point is, is, is not unique to. So, I, I wanna, I wanna move us along because, um, times, times, times run short.
So was there a bullet point there? I mean, just making sure for another initiative, was there?
I'm, I'm fine if we're not gonna, I just have advice.
I don't think we can articulate it. I don't know.
We already do that.
We try.
No, something, the thing you've done on, I think, have been relatively successful. I think the short-term rentals, if we actually had done the numbers. On them when the committee was working on it, I think we would be a little further along than we are now. It's hard, but you can. So anyway.
So anything else on? Efficient and effective town operations? We talked about all those.
That last emerging bullet, that's, and that's happened?
The master plan update.
We gave them the resources and they then underdressed and made pretty robust community engagement.
Yep.
Effort, but I, do we want to take that off?
I think to Matt's point, we can, we can certainly investigate. Additional ways to reach.
Yeah.
With our message through, let's call it something. Soundbite, yeah, through the communications office, but. But, I mean, I wouldn't rule it out. I mean, there's a level of effectiveness. I don't know. Yeah, and earlier in the, I would say some of these things earlier in the process, so that the, you know, so we flush out. The, you know, flush out the real, the, you know, some of the things and try to address it with them, anyway.
How about, how about we consider incorporating? Um, community engagement earlier in large project planning?
Or, or, um, I mean, but like, we have to make sure there's one project, not five. Cause we can't do this for five projects at the same time. Um, maybe something like that or investigate more options of getting the word out to the community. We could send every voter a letter. Annually, here's all the stuff we're working on. They'll probably throw it away when this is from the town, but ma- maybe if it's in a attractively.
Your email. I mean, I, I give your, your monthly email, which has a, there are very few town managers who do that. That has a tremendous amount of information.
And that's the ones we're trying to get to. The people that subscribe are the ones who.
We can look at additional options of getting the word out.
It's, I don't, again, I, I think it's more process than it is. Another, another email or another, or mailing something for three grand. I think it's more, you know, on certain things when you need to. Get people in, you know, to, to do something maybe some of them don't want to do and you need to build a consensus. We have, you know, certain things we have to find a way to do.
A lot of times.
And I, and I'll, I'll leave it to staff to think about.
Let's.
It is a bullet point, but.
Think about it, I don't want to be the grenade thrower skeptic, but.
But let's think about it in light of, as we move to the collision. Because I think perhaps you may identify some priorities here. In the collision report that may require a different kind of engagement from the beginning. So, um, Libby, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah.
List?
So is this what everybody has? Um, so as we've talked about this, there, there are some things on here that are perhaps not quite worded. In a very explanatory manner. And you've seen this before. Um, some of the estimated years are a little, I, I think we might mean fiscal year or not, sorry, not fiscal year, year of borrowing. Because already some of these things are, were in an earlier year. Um, so some of it is, this hasn't been completely refined. This was, this was for higher level discussion, but these are the things that. In the next foreseeable future, five years-ish are going to arise in the, um, in the plan. The Baxter Road Alternative Access, you just had some discussion about that. I think we've more or less. Possibly agreed. It's not ready for the twenty twenty six annual town meeting and there's still a lot of work to do with. Property owners and property acquisitions are gonna be necessary for the alternative access. The new DPW facility, um, we're regrouping a little bit on that. I don't think we're going to the twenty twenty six annual town meeting. And we've got some, we're trying to pick out maybe sort of key people at town meeting that's. Spoken opposition to meet with them as a little group and just do a little brainstorm. What, just kind of what, what you're talking about, Matt. Tom number's debris removal. I don't know if we need to say too much about that. That is, that is underway with permitting and it's just been put out. Uh, campus-wide improvements, I, I don't know that I can talk too much about that other than.
Which one?
Oh, sorry, town employee housing. Um, you've, you've talked about that one. That is going on for twenty twenty six annual town meeting as a debt exclusion. And we're putting, we're gonna be putting a bid out.
We're trying to, yeah, we're gonna try and get a cost estimate in time for town meeting.
Yeah.
And we're probably gonna be recommending developing just one of the lots. So that we can prove, that prove that we, we can do this and, you know, kind of dispense with some of the commentary last, last year, so. Like come, we kind of feel like coming with a. A, a valid price. Well, hopefully it is over the line.
Yeah. The campus-wide improvements, I told the school superintendent that. The school needs to tell us what they want in a debt exclusion. Natural grass or turf or the, um, track surfacing. What, what, what do they want? Because if it's left wide open, we won't have a solid number for finance committee recommendation and then it's. Starts to be a little bit messy. Um, so I, I believe they're working on it. I thought there was gonna be some sort of info session sometime soon, but I'm not sure.
I think something. Something.
Yeah. Somerset needs area, so this is a sewer extension project and, um, it was. Really, we were looking at the twenty twenty six annual town meeting and it seems that. I mean, we haven't even done any public outreach on this, just said, we don't have a design for the bike path, which is supposed to be happening somewhat concurrently with the project. And I asked our, um, engineers. What the implications are if we do not. Put this on the twenty twenty six annual town meeting, of course. Don't know if they get the email, but they basically said that. Um, we, we would have to go into a new round of SRF funding, state revolving loan fund. Um, there is a possibility in the next few years that the zero percent interest rate for that loan fund increases. Probably not more than two percent though. That's the current, I think, cap. Um, the project cost will most likely, of course, go up because every project goes up the longer you put it out. But, uh, it's a big project. It's a forty something million dollar project. Island Home, we. Island home, we can't talk about that. There are a number of coastal resiliency projects that are in, sort of short-term years. They're all listed here. Matt probably knows and Greg knows more about them than I do. The downtown neighborhood flood barrier is actively underway. However, what we're learning about some of these projects is, we need a bigger staff group with more of the infrastructure input. To be sure that everybody's in on this from the beginning and throughout, because for example, stormwater came up a little bit late in the process of this, budget discussion and the stormwater people kind of peripherally knew about this, but weren't, deeply involved and we need to deeply involve them because we may need a stormwater pump station somewhere in the downtown area to deal with, the water. We need to get the steamship engaged and that's been a little bit difficult or, or recently because of their managerial changes. And it's a big number. And it's gonna require some property taking, most likely. So, that's, I mean, it's not tomorrow, it just happened, but it's, it's. These other ones, um, wastewater treatment facility, June restoration, Caffish Park, Pulpus Road, Wash, uh, Washington Street corridor resilience ruins. I, I, I do know about that, 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 and that's not an immediate project, but that is in the works for, you know, what's gonna need to be done on Washington Street to be resilient going forward. Maticat Road raising and bridge culvert conversion. Now also, these numbers, I believe on the right are, they're not current. They're out of the coastal resilience plan, so they have not been updated. And I doubt if the Maticat Road raising and bridge culvert conversion is, includes design and construction. If they did, it's way outdated at this point. Steamboat war for resilience really needs steamship. That, that's kind of a steamship project, which we wanna get their attention on, but it is, very much part of our Easy Street project. They, they need to be integrated. Uh, Sackage upon living shoreline, that is in permitting right now. And that, we're moving out of coastal resilience plan now. We're moving into hazard mitigation and, and. So, this NPS, I mean, the school, I don't know, I just read the school, um, enrollment decline. I don't know if that means they don't need this anymore. Maybe they can push it out a bit. Central municipal building design and construction. We obviously, this is, this is a needed project for many, many reasons, including what Matt said about caving all the town departments together. But we also have many remote buildings, all of which require maintenance, all of which are, old and getting older and they need a lot of work. And if you have one big building, it's easier to manage and maintain. However, this, a project like this requires a big focus and we can't really have other large projects going on at the same time if we're gonna do something like this. Senior Center, I think the idea here was that when, if the island home moves, we put a senior center at the, East Creek site. But that's not even been.
I mean, or whether we carry purpose the existing, a portion of the existing building.
Yeah, the, we did have SNR to take a look at that and they said you should just demolish it because the rental costs would exceed.
And I think we need to manage expectations about what can we do in a senior center. Given everything else we need to do.
Yeah. And I, I know the land bank has, has been discussing the potential acquisition, their acquisition.
And they retained an appraiser.
Yes.
But they can only purchase the portion of the land that we're not using for the senior center. We can't sell them the whole site and then build the senior center.
Unless we, unless there's some sort of lease potential there. I, I don't, exploration required.
Yeah.
The intermodal transportation center. So I, I think you all mostly know about this. This is an older project, which is basically waiting for some sort of disposition of, the Wilks, so-called Wilk Square property. Um, as we recall, the town was initially advised that the, um, uh, National Grid was it, was going to give us the property? And then Matt and I and some other people went to a meeting and said, oh, no, no, no. We're never gonna do that. And, but they very clearly told us previously they were, but then there was a change of real estate, um, staff in their organization and it's not, a give anyone. And there's discussions, I think, going down, on down there with the property owners. The Hummer Pond needs area sewer extensions. Those, those are, those are probably out a bit because we need to do probably Somerset beforehand. And so the twenty eight, twenty nine timeframe is, we're talking thirties, late.
So I would really like a review of the environmental and financial impacts of doing or not doing, the Somerset needs areas as a whole.
The environmental and what?
And financial impacts. And I mean by financial on the operation of the, of the sewer treatment plant. It's, I mean, I know that having more, properties connected contributes to, you know, sharing the operating expense of the whole facility. So I really, you know, that's, that is, and also the, the increase of development that results, when a neighborhood is sewered. Like I just wanna, I wanna look at this holistically, um. I don't think in this climate that a sewer project is. Yeah. So, so I feel like I wanna do what the state legislature does is send it back to study.
Yeah.
A, a little bit. Um, uh, but I wanted, I, I don't wanna do that because, it seems like an easy one to pick off the list. I wanna make sure it's a logical choice. So, so spending a few minutes and analyzing it, um, before we deprioritize it.
Well, I will say the, the, uh, connection fees and then the privilege fee, that was only paying about half of the cost. So every time we add one, we are subsidizing it, you know, through the taxes and or through the, uh, other people paying for their sewer, you know, sewer fees. And so it's, it's not, you know, it's, we're getting income, but we're actually adding expenses. So if we save that, that gallonage at the plant and use it for other increases that we've added, then I think, you know, we're sort of ahead of the game.
And how does that intersect with the board of health moving toward, changing the requirements on septic systems? And are we, are we putting an eighty thousand dollar burden on a property order to put an IA system instead of a, fifteen thousand dollar burden plus taxes to connect to sewer, right? Uh, I just wanna really understand this in full context. Um.
I think that's pretty simple. Okay, um, so, it's probably time for some kind of sewer master plan review with the board.
Yeah.
Um, but we're gonna have to gear up for that with our engineers and it's probably gonna toss something. So why don't we do a little work on this?
But I think deciding not to do it this year on the warrant is the first step. Minus the time to do.
That's easy. I, yeah, I would, I would say no to that.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Same.
And what you're asking for is.
To Somerset or?
Somerset.
To.
That it's.
And Hummer Pond.
They are out.
Yeah.
This current detail.
And with that assessment, we really have to look at expansion of housing and development as we put in sewers. We look at our bylaws or zoning laws and stop that somehow.
You have to look at.
I mean, I, I.
So that's health code, not zoning. So you'd be, you'd be downzoning people. You, you have to downzone people. And that's a hard pill to swallow.
I think we have to look at it.
I agree.
Because, you know, a sewer is the best thing environmentally, no question about it. And we, we are asking, you know, put in alternate design systems, which are expensive as hell and the technology of that is gonna change. So the ones we're putting in are gonna be outdated in a couple of years. It's, it's running around. And, uh, but we can't put in sewers. We're gonna have more housing development and we write back all the mess we have before.
It, it, it's not, it's not necessarily the best thing to sewer because we don't know that, cause no one has studied what the impact of searing is. There's, there's hardscaping and there's bigger roofs and they're only, we're only measuring for nitrates. We're not measuring for a bunch of things.
There's other things besides nitrates.
I understand. And so none of that is being tracked or, or, so we haven't really looked as, as, you know, is it better? That's just one of those Nantucket things.
It's not just Nantucket thing.
I understand.
We went through this a couple of years ago. I actually looked at all of that. I have some papers, I'll show it to you. It is better.
All you have to prove.
Alternate design systems.
Not be solved today.
No.
But you, you have to prove it to me because.
We have, we have to look at this whole issue.
Land and water hasn't looked at it either. So, all right.
So Libby went through the list as it currently is. I have two questions before I ask you the hard question. The first question is, um, are, are there things that you've talked about today that need to be, on this list for prioritization? And then the second question is, are there things like we just had the conversation around Somerset and Hummer Pond that, you would push out, that aren't ones that you want to really talk about in the near term? And by near term, we're talking in the next couple of years. Because the final hard question is going to be, which of these projects, do you think rise to the top in terms of prioritization, over the next five years? So first question, is there anything not on this list?
I do wanna move up again, something. For other municipal building.
Yeah.
For design. And I would love it if we could bring it to a state.
Municipal building.
Um. And I'm, I'm sure about Island Home.
I know.
Well, uh, still, I know, we're gonna have a regroup on that.
So you want to design for municipal solo? So, can I just ask, cause it, it's kind of this is what's happened with, I don't know, is you get eight nat million dollar open design money and then you can't get the hundred and twenty seven nat million dollars to build a place. Are we supposed to be asking for all of it just to really be able to gauge with the voters? Hey, are they willing to pay a hundred million dollars? Why get five million and spend it and then not, not have the next ninety, next ninety-five?
That's an excellent question. Maybe we should be asking for all of it at once.
Okay, how do we, we can't estimate it without design.
I know.
Yeah, well.
Such a chicken in an egg.
Well, we, we could probably get a per square footage estimated number, tack on, a little bit of an increase over time and see what that would cost. However, we also need to factor in where are people going to go where the building is going to locate? And the site design for, I, I mean, we're, I'm assuming we're talking about the two fairgrounds site. So that entire site, including the parking lot, is gonna need some kind of redesign in order to fit the building. Deal with the people in the two fairgrounds building while there's a new building under construction, which is why we have some part, well, not totally why, but, a little bit why we have office trailers as a capital item for twenty twenty seven. Um, but there's, there's, there's like, there's just other costs. There's gonna need to be some sort of sewer, all the utility, um, connections. I don't know about permitting, drainage. We, we'd have to really, twenty twenty six town meeting would be a real push.
Okay.
And we'd have to drop some stuff. Cause we also have done zero outreach. We're almost in November now. And, um, I think people probably support the concept, the town offices should be in one building, probably out of town, but there's gonna be a lot of other questions. Well, what are you gonna do with the town building? Well, previously when we talked about this, there was going to be some associated renovations in the town building. Some offices would stay there. And there would be some renovation of space for the court system, but who's gonna pay for that? Cause they're not going to.
Yeah, it's, I know, it's both. I just think we, we definitely need to regroup on that.
Yes, we, yes, I think we definitely.
All the things here.
Well, and, and I wanna investigate the idea of doing a municipal office campus that isn't necessarily one eighty million dollar building. Yeah. So that, so that we can incrementally construct and move departments in as we need to move out of deteriorating spaces. Um, and that, 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 that the ask isn't eighty million dollars. There is a plan that's eighty million dollars, but we're asking for it of the taxpayers incrementally. Um, based on emergent needs, like. Kind of like developing one lot of housing. Yeah, exactly. The same theory. Like here's what the whole thing is, but we're gonna start here and then get to show, look how great it is. This department is now housed at two fairgrounds. We didn't have to displace plus while we built that first building. Then we demolish that building and do the next one and think about it as a, as a campus instead of a massive building. Um, uh, you know, I don't know whether that, what the relative cost of doing, obviously you do it over time, it costs more. Um, and maybe multiple buildings is, is substantially more than, than one building, right? But if you do one building and the taxpayers never vote for it, you're nowhere. So I don't know, it's just.
It's kind of like the public safety building. I mean, it cost us more money to build the fire station because it wasn't, first time, but at least all the HVAC and all the big equipment was in the police station as one anchor.
Yeah, so it's a comprehensive plan done in stages. And maybe it's a building that you add on to over time, or maybe it's multiple buildings. I don't know. But, um.
So is there agreement, some type of municipal building slash municipal campus, of this list as it stands, is the top priority, is a top priority? I won't say the, but a.
Top three, top five.
I know, but it's, 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 it's on the top.
Well, it's timely since sort of the town building was just evacuated for potential electrical fires, so.
I mean, having more of these trailers is not. But.
And I think there's a way to, uh, my guess is, is a way to do it without like having to tear down the plus building. I think there's a way to build it, on that site. We might not get, we might not get the parking lot. We might have to use the parking lot for this, but I think there's a way to do a plan out there that, that positions us in a place that everything can keep running. But, you know, that has to be, someone has to go and do that, that planned work.
So what that means is, again, back to what y'all talked about this morning, focus, that's gonna mean that this entire list can't get done. In order, in order to develop that plan, and weigh the options, that's gonna take existing resources and focus, of town staff to do that.
I believe that coastal resilience project somehow got leapfrogged over other important community priorities, in a way that may not have been necessary. I'm just gonna say that for the record. Because yes, we have some flood, flooding and yes, we have to do some planning. But we've let these other things like the DPW facility and the municipal office, like slide into the background, um, as we brought the coastal resilience stuff. Um, and I'm not sure there's community consensus on coastal resilience projects either, when, when we're asking for twenty, thirty, forty million dollars. So I wouldn't mind that reshuffling of the, of the cards to get, you know, um, municipal operations prioritized.
Well, I think that's for some other betterment this time.
Yeah, and, and we need to solve that.
Here's the problem. I think if we slide these somewhere for five years, ten years, coastal resilience and stuff, we'll be in the same situation we are now in ten years. Staff will, will not have worked on it, cause they're gonna be busy with other things. It's not gonna be prioritized enough. So I think a couple of them have to stay on, you know, and, and like Sackage should stay on. You know, we're sort of underway anyway. There's a couple of them should stay on in the planning for some of these others like Washington Street and Steamboat. And maybe it's not the full amount to do it, but the planning for it should still be going. It should be funded in, in moving forward, or we're gonna be like, not gonna be able to do it when we really do need it. You know, and I think we have a little bit more time than we thought we had.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, you know, a few, probably a few more years, not a few more decades.
Totally. But I'm talking about like what, what, in the next year, two years.
Yes.
Five years. Can we let some of these things go on a, a back burner, monitoring, inching them forward, keeping an eye on them, um, versus, I, I really worry about recruitment and retention when we are letting the facilities our employees work in. I, I really worry about recruitment and retention when we are letting the facilities our employees work in deteriorate to the level we are. I don't, I don't wanna ask our employees to come in, in places with asbestos and damp floors and that smell bad. Like.
Electrical fire.
You're talking about my office and I'm against that.
Uh, that, I, I just, I just feel people expect us to, the, the town to run well while they expect us to ignore the needs of the town at the same time. That frustrates me. I wanna push fast.
How much? It's, there's another way of looking at this. How much do you think the town or the, uh, town meeting will approve number-wise each year? How many millions?
It's emotional to the project. Yeah, definitely.
Because we're doing this project-wise. In my last life, when we used to have twenty research projects, the way it worked was we had a budget. We said, next year, Malcolm, you can spend blank. And so we worked around that. And if it fell below that number, project maybe next year.
If we're bringing Island Home back, we should have some time.
Yeah, we take it all, yeah.
And it's just, this is not how I'm used to doing capital, big projects. It's crazy. It'd be nice if we had a budget saying, we're gonna spend fifty million dollars, a hundred million dollars over the year. Or we could afford to do that.
Well, that would still allow you to do our Island Home because you're gonna, you're gonna borrow for it.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, it's just, no comment.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I think sort of the numbers are, some of these are a lot less than others, right? But they're all millions of dollars. And I'm not saying there's, yeah, it depends on how you think of it, right? So I, I don't know, looking at this sheet, right? I, and, and the comments on the central municipal study, I completely agree with all that. I, I think that is a top priority, though top priority or thereabouts. And so the way I'm thinking about looking at this list is if we shelve Somerset, I'm just gonna make this up, right? Shelve Somerset Needs Area and Hummer Pond Needs Area. And whether we do or don't do our own home, but say for argument's sake, we're not doing it. And we leave, say, we need central facility, municipal facility, we need a DP, new DPW facility, however that ends up turning out. And we need this town employee housing to be able to run this town for the next five to fifty year, like whatever, whatever the timeframe is that, that, that makes sense for how long the facilities last and are good for. To me, that is, that is a total, totally re- reasonable, forget the numbers aside, right? Because those are all shocking. Guys, as we have all seen, right? But that's a totally reasonable ask for us to go out there and to try and make the sale to, to try and run this town. Um, if, if we're okay with not prioritizing the other, the other parts of it, but I, but I think, like, the numbers don't need to match up exactly. But since these, since the big ones are all set sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred and twenty million dollars, right? We can only do so many of those. Like, and also the bandwidth for the town and town admin. I don't think we can do a new DPW facility, a central municipal facility, this, this sewer project and et cetera, et cetera. Have it be six hundred million dollars and the town to be able to run itself and for whatever other things that come out of nowhere. That's just not possible. I think that's kind of the point of this, right? So that, that's what I would say is, i- is like looking at this today, October twenty-first, that leaning into the town, being able to run itself properly for the next X amount of years is the most, the highest priority in my estimation at the moment.
I've heard general consensus around that. And that does mean, back to what we've talked about this morning too, and the communication piece, is if you all agree, then that is part of the narrative coming out of this conversation. When all those other asks keep coming, because this list doesn't go away and the voices and the noise around some of these things doesn't go away and in fact make it louder. So I just call that as a question. Are you all comfortable committing to that level of support?
Absolutely.
Are there other things that rise to the top? I have a question mark next to our Island Home because of what's going on there. Um, you also talked about the sewer master plan update as a way of identifying some of the, um, uh, the sewer-related environmental and financial impacts of some of those sewer-related projects. Is there anything else on this list that you think needs more immediate attention?
The thing. Um, no, I just think that some decisions are gonna have to be made about, a big decision has to be made about the Island Home.
Yeah.
And may, maybe we're holding up on the survey and we're holding up on the other items, but the fact remains that it's in the one hundred and thirty million dollar range, that it's not gonna go down very much. And, um, if we're gonna do, if that project gets approved, say, we're, we're not doing any other capital project for it.
Gonna do. I think it's, I think it was a good try. It's time to move on.
Malcolm, to your question a second, I gotta just roll the, the hundred and thirty-five million. Well, twenty-one to twenty-four, I have twenty-five on my spreadsheet, but sixty million bucks is what we appropriated for capital on average across those years.
Sixty million.
I have eighty-one over thirty-five.
So if that was our goal, we, we just do sixty million every year for comfortable. If that finance isn't comfortable with it.
That includes charitable debt and debt exclusions. And if anybody challenges that, I did it in about three seconds.
It's, it's probably good.
Not forgotten.
But I, I don't know if that's, uh, if that is reliable enough to say the voters are gonna approve sixty million dollars a year for random.
A capital budget. Well, and, and it, and it ranged from twenty to eight, you know, like.
Yeah, well.
There's some of these projects that won't fall under sixty million, no matter how hard we try.
But it's also not one hundred and fifty million.
Right.
So it's not multiple of these.
Yes. You know, I, our Island Home is, we, we, we've gotta figure that out first.
So what's the trigger? Is it the survey?
I, I don't know what the trigger is, but I do feel like the survey is, um, is not a statistically, uh, reliable, yeah, survey. Um, it was, it wasn't meant to be.
It's gonna have what's called response bias. Where, I, I actually wrote a paper on that, on response bias. It all has, people that take surveys are, it's not, it's not a survey.
Exactly.
It's, 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 it's very inaccurate to me. A lot of people out there are gonna boo at me now, but I think our Island Home is done. It's just not possible anymore. It was a good idea at the time, but things have moved, it didn't get approved and let's, we have other things to do. We can't spend a billion dollars anymore. And we can spend about sixty, maybe sixty to a hundred million a year. That seems, maybe that's a comfortable number. That's it. And if we go over that and we'll, Island Home, if that's the rule, so that's the McNabb kind of rule. Island Home is the only thing we do for the next couple of years.
Just to be clear how blunt that analysis is, right? Because we borrow this month, right? So it's a hundred and thirty-five million dollars, it's a hundred and thirty-five million dollars.
Yes.
So it's, it's less than that on an annual basis. It's more than that over, over.
Yeah, so. Anyway, so there's.
It's not just money. Also staff resources. Right? Over multiple years to complete it. Um, we're gonna have to make the hard decision.
To close it eventually to, or again, to keep your running for as long as possible. So we have, we.
Right, we need that, that's the trigger.
But we wouldn't incorporate it.
I, I looked at it and the, taking out the public school, they've got a hundred and six million between there two have landed it up, right? And, uh, and one was, uh, twenty-nine, thirty-one. So they've got, you know, in that timeframe, I said, okay, get rid of Baxter for now, get rid of DPW for now. Keep the removal because you have to. Keep the employee housing because you have to. Uh, I, I'll just put the Island Home aside for a minute. Uh, Dunes Restoration, I do a percentage of that to figure out what you need to do at the, at the, uh, treatment plant. And then a percentage of Washington Street and a percentage of Steamboat, just to make sure that we're still working on them. Uh, ten grand to Sakacha for, ten million to Sakacha. And the decentral design in eighty-eight puts the town about two eighteen. So town's at two hundred and eighteen without the Island Home, based on those choices. You know, so maybe that's done over two or three years and that gets you about to your sixty. You know, because some of these are soon and some of them are in a year or two years or three years. So that gets us to about, you know, to about the sixty. I didn't do that on purpose. It just turned out that way.
We have someone named Aquilus with their hand raised. I don't know who that is. It's an attendee.
I thought that the board had said that they weren't taking public comment during this session.
Yeah, I didn't, well, I just didn't know how that came up.
Because they registered to be an attendee, but if we just say, thank you, but.
More, that public comment. We, that we have to end this meeting. What was it until to the line? I have a.
So we are at the end of time.
I, I, I do, I, I really gotta go.
Well, he did say it so graciously. So I just, I'm gonna do a pulse check quickly. Still general consensus around focusing on the municipal campus slash school.
Yeah.
Yes, and the other two. DPW and the town employee housing.
Yeah, yeah.
For the, for the town to be able to run itself efficiently, effectively.
Can the DPW initially go to, well, I guess it can't, because a lot of what you talked, we're talking about DPW is, is storage for machines.
We have to figure out a little bit if we can spread out like this into smaller numbers.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking, I'll, could they, could their, uh, management go into a town, you know, into a town building and be part of that team? And then could the other folks be the, you know?
I guess very official.
Not having the managers almost in the south.
You need to officially.
So, I have to, yeah, I've gotta go to the meeting in the next.
Yeah, you have a big.
Sean, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Second. So.
All those in favor?
All right.
First meeting and the message.
Thank you all. That was good.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. You can go.
All right. So Greg, can I walk you through turning off the, everything?
Yeah. Over there, yeah.
Or Rick? So you're gonna need to stop the Zoom and end the stream. So on the laptop, it should be YouTube and stream. And then over on the big screen, you're gonna go over, you're gonna bring your mouse over to, um, over there and.
Yeah.
End the meeting in Zoom.